So start recording. Hello, so um I'll put my grid lines on. Last time we left off at five point four, we finished five point four. So. I'll move back to there. And I'll do like a super, super quick recap of what we did yesterday. So five point one was just what a linear transformation is. Five point two was matrix representation of a linear transformation. Five point three was properties of linear transformations, right? So just like things you can do and composite and inverse transformations. And. And I got, and we also did five point, we did five point four, yeah, and that was special transformations, which is like the rotation and the reflection and the composition of those two. Okay, so the next stuff that we're going to talk about is five point five, which is the idea of one to one and on to a transformation, which is like a property of a transformation. Right? Um, and these are uh. The same as, yeah, and then we're gonna get into the stuff that I don't understand that well, so hopefully we'll, we'll figure it out. But let's start with five point five. So the main thing from five point five to get, right? Again, it's called. It's called one to one. One, two, one, and on to. Is what these two things are, right? So um, we, the first thing that's understand is when I write something like this, if I write T uh goes, well, first of all, T goes from R N to R M. And I write T of R N. Right? This literally means like I apply T to every vector in the input space, right? What is my output gonna be? Well, the output isn't gonna be a whole, a whole space. It's gonna be, I mean, sorry, the, the output isn't gonna be one vector or something like that. It's gonna, it's gonna be a whole space. In fact, it's gonna be a subspace of R M, right? It's gonna be a subspace of R M. This is equal to the image, I'm pretty sure, not the image, yeah, it is equal to, yes, it is equal to the image. To the image of T. Right? So that's, the image of T is like everything you map onto, right? You actually map onto. Sometimes these two things will be the same. Right? Sometimes these two things will be the same. And if they are, right? So if, if, if you evaluate T at every vector in R N and you get um, you get the whole of R M, right? As an output space? That's what it means to be on to. Right? So that's what it means to be on to. If the image of T, uh, you can kind of think of this as the range of T. The range of T and R M is the codomain. So if the range equals the codomain. That's what it means to be on to, right? You map all of R N on to R M. Or you map R N on to all of R M. That's kind of a better way to say it. That's why it's called on to. Right? And maybe I'll, I'll type that out because that's probably good. Um, on to means you map all of, no, you map, keep saying the wrong one, R N, R N. On to all of R M. Right? Your input space on to all of your output space. Okay, so how do we prove a transformation is on to? Right? Um, well, I guess actually first I'll talk about what's one, what's one to one, and then we'll prove a transformation is, is both at the same time. Well, not at the same time, but in one question. So one to one is um, uh, similar, exactly the same meaning as in calculus when we did um. Inverse functions, right? So if I have just a quadratic here, right? If I just have a quadratic here, this is not a one to one function. And what that means is that if I, if I have two Y values that are the same, right? Let's say this point and this point. Say the Y value there is five, right? Y equals five. Right? So. The, what that would, what that should mean is that there's only, if this was on to, then there would be only one X value that gives you that output. But in the case of this parabola, there's two X values that give you the output of five. In fact, it's specifically these two, right? X one and X two. Uh, X one, X two, right? And so this is not on to. Not on to. So in terms of linear tran- linear transformations, it's the same thing, right? It's, the, the assumption is that if you have, right, or I guess I'll write it in functions first. So if you have F of X. Uh, F of X one equals F of X two, then X one must equal X two. Right? That's, that's, that's what it means in terms of functions, right? So if you have two results that are the same, it must be because they were the same X value. That's what it means to be one to one. Two, one, right? And so. This is not one to one, and the exact same idea applies to transformations, right? So if I have T of some vector X one. Which is equal to T of some vector X two, well, it must be that X one is just X two. That these two vectors are the same and I evaluated the transformation at the same vector.
Uh, I don't know. I think you made a small typo for the quadratic one. You just wrote on to.
Yeah, on to instead of one to one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're right. Not one, two, one, you're right. I said the wrong one. Yeah, not one to one. That's what I mean. So I'm, hopefully I don't make that mistake more, but yeah, so. Um, so that's what it means that one to one, right? It just means that if I, if I have two outputs that are the same of the transformation, it must be because the two inputs were the same. Same for quadratics. Okay, so that's on to and one to one. Um. There's some words, but it doesn't really matter what the words are. You won't be tested on that. Um, whatever. Subjection. Um, okay. And one way to check if something's one to one and a good way to check is that if you get, if you do T of X, right? T of X. Equals zero, right? Then what that should mean is that um, oh wait, is that right? Yeah, yeah, if T of X, if you get T of X equals zero, what that should mean is that X was zero. Right? That should mean that X equals zero. If that's true, right? If, if that is true, then it's a one to one function. One to one transformation. And so you can use this fact to help us prove that something is a one to one transformation. You might notice that um. Anything with an eigenvalue is not one to one. Right? Because my name is just something I think about. And that's for chapter seven. Um, so uh, let's prove something is one to one and on to. Right? So let's use this one. So T of, T of X Y, so again, this is just from Horowitz's lectures. Uh, T of X Y is two X minus Y minus X. Okay, and we're trying to see, is this on to? Is this one to one? Okay. So to prove that something's on to, right? Oh, and sorry, uh, T goes from, I mean, you can see from the question, but T goes from R two to R two. To prove that something's on to, right? What that means is that it maps on to all of R two, all of the outs, output space. Right? In this case, which is R two. And I'll write that too a little nicer. Right? That's what it means to be on to. There's no vector in R two that isn't an output of this transformation. So what we can do is we can just take a generic vector in R two, A B. Right? And we can do um, uh, what can we do? T of X, yeah, and we're trying to prove that, let me write it over here, we're trying to prove that there is some T of X Y. That equals a generic vector A B. Right? There is, and we're trying to figure out what that X Y is. Right? Now, we can't, we're not gonna find an exact number because we don't know exactly what this A B is, right? But using this fact, we can prove that something's on to. So I'm gonna replace, I'm gonna replace this with this. Right? So it's gonna be two X minus Y minus X. Equals A B. And so the goal is to be able to write X and Y in terms of A and B. That's the goal, to write X and Y in terms of A and B. Because then you know exactly what vector will map, what va- what vector in the input space will map to this vector in R two, in the output space. So I can write this as two X minus Y equals A, negative X equals B. Okay, I can take this equation and say X equals negative B. And then after that, I can take this equation and say two times negative B minus Y equals A. Right? And I can rearrange this, so it's getting a little, a little strange, but we can rearrange and say Y equals A. Uh, no, Y equals negative A minus two B. And since I'm able to say this, for any vector in the output space, any generic vector, any generic vector A B in the output space. The vector that maps on to A B after the transformation is X Y. X Y. Right? This vector, which is negative B, negative A minus two. Since I'm able to say this, that I can, I can choose any vector in the output space, any, any vector in two dimensions, A or B, like with, with coordinates A B, right? And using this formula, I can figure out which vector in the input space maps on to it after. Since I'm able to make that, this is on to. Okay. Okay, so there's, there's that. Um. Then let's, uh, any questions so far? I think we're good.
Yeah, where wouldn't it be on to?
Well, maybe let's do an, let's try to find an example where it's not on to. It, you wouldn't be able to make this. You wouldn't be able to make this, right? So there would be some, there would be some uh, criteria, like for example, if you ended up, if you ended up at the end, okay, sorry, maybe you'd be able to make it, but there'd be some restrictions on A and B. So maybe at the end you got to this, negative B, negative A minus two B over B. So this works for every vector in R two except if B equals zero. Right? So this would not be on to. Because it would map on to every vector in, in the output space except where the second coordinate is zero.
Oh, so you solve where there's no solution?
Well, so here there's always a solution, right? And there's no restrictions on A or B in this, right? But here there's a restriction on A or B. So it wouldn't be on to anymore.
Okay.
Because there's like some criteria that A and B have to be. It's not the whole of R two, it, it has some criteria, and so then it wouldn't be on to.
Uh, okay. Alright, so something in Said's study hall today was uh, I, I don't know if you wanna check this with like while we're doing examples. That uh, like a summarized version of on to and one to one is that if there is a uh, I'll just confirm this, I'm not wrong. Okay, here, so if there's a zero column, it's not one to one. So if all the, like the numbers are zero in one column, then it's not one to one. And if it's zero row, then it's not on to. And if it's not, like if one or, if it's not one to one, or if it's not on to, or if it's both of them, then it's not an isomorphism. Like if, if you wanna just check that, so like I can confirm that and in case we need to use it during the test.
Yeah, well.
I think it's zero row, not the column.
Yeah, I don't remember the order. So if the order is messed up, then it, then might, might be wrong, yeah. That's just kind of just a, that's like a rule to remember, right? So if you were to take the matrix, the matrix representation of this, which would be one, negative one, negative one, zero. Oh, sorry, two, negative one, negative one, zero. Two, negative one, negative one, zero. Right? And you were to put this in R E F, right? Put this in R E F, you'd see that, well, okay, so let's make this po- positive. Okay, and subtract two, so it'd be zero, and it would be this minus two times this, this, one, zero. Right? And then one, zero, zero, one. Since we have a leading coefficient, uh, uh, leading coefficient, uh, leading entry in every row and every column, it'll be on to and one to one.
Right.
On to and one, two, one. Uh, why? I don't really know. Well, let me think about it. Okay, so if it doesn't, if it doesn't have a column, right? If it doesn't have a, uh, sorry, if we were missing a column, right? Then you would have a free variable. Right? And what that means is that you have an eigenvector. Okay, that means you have an eigenvector. Vector, right? Because there's a, there is a solution to the homogeneous system, right? This is the homogeneous system with zero zeros here, right? And so what that means, since you have an eigenvector, that means there's other vectors that map to zero, right? That can map to zero. Right? With a zero coefficient, right? That's what the, or it could be, I guess. It doesn't necessarily, well, yeah, it doesn't mean for sure, actually. But that's, that's my logic of it. If it has an eigenvector, I don't think it can be one to one. Thinking, is there any other? Kernel, yeah, transformation map to zero. Yeah, I think there's.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
That's all, that's all I was gonna say. That's, that's my, that's my reasoning for if there's, if there's a column missing, then you have an eigenvector, then it can't be one to one. That's all I was.
Alright. Hey, um, for the zero row, it's not a, like on to?
Yeah, I guess so. I guess so, yeah, it wouldn't be on to. I don't know, I don't know why, though.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that, cause like a shortcut in case we have for the test.
And, and if, yeah, if, if you have it written down somewhere, make sure I have it right, like it's, cause I, I don't have it in front of me, so. I, I'm pretty sure, and it, it seems to make sense to me that if you're missing a column, it won't be one to one. And if you're missing a row, it won't be on to. So this is for column. I think there's two Ls in column. And um.
One L, one L.
One L column? Maybe I'm thinking of Ga- maybe I'm thinking of Col- Gollum from, oh, to the right.
No, it's okay. We're engineers, not engineers.
Yeah, it's fine. We don't have to spell.
Yeah, what was, what was like the whole point of this, though? Like you, you um, solved for X and Y in terms of A and B, then what?
Well, this proves, this proves that it's on to. Right? The fact that I can do, because, because you see, if I tell you any vector in R two, the output space, I say, okay, I say the vector three, six, and I wanna know what, what X value. Needs to be, like what, what X value needs to be put into the transformation to get that out of it, I can use this formula.
Wait, and you say X values, but X and Y are just positioned, right? Like?
Any X vector, X vector values, X vector, right? Any X vector, the vector itself, right? So if, if I wanna get three, six out, then I just plug that into here. Well, it would be negative six, negative three, minus two times six. Right?
We just proved it's consistent, guys.
Uh, yeah, and it's all, like, and it always has, yeah, things at the end, right? Yeah, yeah. For, for any A B, right? For any A B.
Yeah. Um, so in Said's um, lecture, uh, in, in the study hall, he had a zero column and it was, and it was still an on to.
Zero column is still on to?
Yeah, here I have a picture.
Sure. I don't really, I, like, I, the only time I heard the, those rules were from Said's thing, so I don't really know the rules that much.
Oh, guys, I think they just remixed the chemistry exam marks.
Did they? I thought they were supposed to do it next Monday. Really?
That's great.
Next Monday, too.
Bro, I swear we had this talk in the general chat.
I know, right? I don't know, I can see my mark.
What? What?
No, I just got a notification on the Pulse app.
I did so much worse than I thought. What the heck?
Oh, wow. Bruh, okay, I'm not gonna even look at this shit today. No, this is not today. Don't, don't look at this shit today. We don't have time for this.
Yeah, I'm looking at, on that, on like maybe next year.
If you're smart, if you're smart, don't look at it today.
Yeah. I sleep in things, no, I was kinda tired.
Yeah, guys, don't worry about it, trust me.
Yeah.
Go tomorrow.
You'll figure it out another day.
Forget there was a cam announcement today. Forget, just say D two L messed up or something.
It's coming.
Yeah. Okay, um, yeah, I don't, I don't really, I can see.
No, no zero.
It's consistent. You got a zero row. Hmm.
So basically, when you solve it into R R E F, um, if you have a zero row, then it can't be an on to. Um, the columns, uh, if you, you can have a zero column and it can still be an on to.
Yeah, but it can be one to one.
It's, it could still be one to one?
No, it can't.
It can't be one.
It's the zero column, okay, it's basically um, if you have more columns than you have rows, that means you're gonna have an arbitrary uh, one, at least one arbitrary value. And that's um, yeah, if you have an arbitrary value, then it can be a one to one. It's not, I don't think it was necessarily meant to be like a zero column, but if you.
Yeah, if you're variable, then you have infinite number of solutions, but not one to one, one to.
Yeah, that makes sense, that makes sense.
So you can have a non-trivial solution.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, cause it's due to the kernel also. The kernel has to have a trivial solution where um, only the zero vector is um. Like only zero is uh, gets you to your zero vector, I guess.
In the kernel, yeah, the only zero vectors, that's, that's what it means to be one to one as well, right? One to one, right? Yeah, you only have the zero vector in the kernel. So that's necessary, which is why I was thinking about eigenvectors with an eigenvalue of zero, right? Eigenvectors with an eigenvalue of zero, or eigenvalue equals, equals zero. Right? Because then that's a, that's a uh, uh. What's it called? Uh, something in the kernel, right? That's in the null space of the whole, of the whole matrix.
Yeah.
Which you could only have if you had T, a free variable. But we'll talk more about that after, yeah. So, yeah, I guess that's a way, so we can, we know that this is already gonna be uh, one to one, but this is how I would actually prove that something's one to one. So we proved it's on to by doing this. Now, to prove it's one to one, uh, I'll take the transformation again, right? So I'll write it again down here, I'll just say T.
Uh, you might wanna fix that matrix. You, you made it zero, it was one.
Yeah, this, okay, I guess, yeah. And I'll get rid of that T there. Um, and this was two X. Two X minus Y. Minus X. Okay, and so to prove that this is one to one, that means if I get T of X Y. Equals zero, then the only solution for this vector should be zero, zero. It should be the zero vector. So in other words, two X minus Y minus X should equal zero, zero. Right? And well, I mean, we can solve this by, like, I can, okay, I, yeah, I'll do it in just like uh. R R E F, right? So it's gonna be two, uh, negative one, negative one, zero, and we already did the R R E F of this, right? So we said the R R E F was one, zero, zero, one. And so what that means is that X, I should say like that, X e- X equals zero. And Y equals zero are the only solutions. Right? That's the, that's the only solution to the homogeneous system, so it must be one to one. Right? So pretty much what we were saying before. So yeah, so if you had an extra um. If you had a. Yeah, if you had a row of zeros, what would that do? No, if you had a row of zeros, but there was still a leading one in every column, that would still be okay, in every row.
Yeah, so if it's a zero row, it's still one to one. It has to have a zero column to be non-one to one.
Yeah.
But then if it had zero. Yeah, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, if, if, if you had this, it would not, it would not be one to one anymore, right?
Or on to.
Or on to, right? But if you had, if you had um, this, it should still be one to one.
Yeah, that's, that's right.
That should still be one to.
At least from what I understood from Said in the study.
And also from just like what I, yeah, from just what I'm thinking. I, like, maybe there's some rule that I'm breaking, but from, that seems to make sense to me. Because it's still X equals zero, Y equals zero, Z equals zero. Those are the only solutions to the homogeneous system, right? So it still follows this rule. It still is that if I get this, the only solution for this should be zero, zero.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So that's, that's, yeah, that's still one to one. Um, and yeah. Of course, of course, this is a, not a, this is not this example. This is just a hypothetical, right? Just to not confuse anyone. This is just a hypothetical one. Not part of this, there you go. Um. Okay, so yeah, there's that. We proved that this transformation is one to one and on to. Um. Let's take a look at the next part here. Okay, so, yeah, here's the, here's the note on what, what Horowitz said. So if, if T goes from R N to R, oops, to R M and is linear. Then T is one to one. If and only if. Uh, the, the rank of the matrix representation of T equals N. And similarly, T is. On to. If and only if the. Uh, yeah, the rank. Of T equals N. So notice for both of these to be true, you would have to go from R N to R N. And it would have to be an N by N matrix. With leading ones in each column. Which is what we're gonna get into the next section, but just an, just an idea. Um. And. And composite functions are, like, it goes, right? So if, if S goes from R K to R M. And T goes from R M to R N, then S of T, and, and both of these are on to slash one to one, whatever, whatever combination. One, two. One, then S of T will also be on to and one to one. That's pretty much it. Or one, or so like if, if they're both on to, then S of T will be on to. If they're both one to one, then S of T will be one to one. If they're both on to and one to one, then S of T will be both on to and one to. Right? Uh, we can do one more example if people want, or I can move on to five point six. I can do one more example of proving something is, is on to and um. One to one, and it fails one of the tests, yeah.
But this, you said like from R to M, right? So you're saying that if that's the case, it's only going to be either on to R, one to one, if it's like the rank is equal to the M R equal to N?
Uh.
Right?
And like, you're saying these, the, the, like, the dimension, right? That these have to be equal for it to be both, yeah.
Yeah, or if it's not, it's on, it's either gonna be one to one, or if the rank is M, it's on to, if the rank is N, it's one to one, but it can be both.
It can't be both unless N equals M, in which case it could be both, right? But otherwise, otherwise, yeah, it can't be both. Which, for the, more of a reason for that is gonna be in five point six when we talk about the next section, which is isomorphisms, but yeah. Yeah, so, okay, should I do an example where one of the tests fail?
You could.
Yeah.
Is there any complicated example?
I, I only have one more example from Horowitz's lectures that one, when one of them fail, so. If you wanna, okay, I can try that one. Um. Oh, actually, hold on, I remember doing this and I didn't, let me see quickly.
One, two, three, four, five.
I'm proof square matrix, then one of them fail.
What'd you say? Sorry?
Because if it's not like a square, square matrix, or if it doesn't go from R N to R N, one of them will fail.
Yeah.
Right? Cause it's isomorphic.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, that's right. Both of these things can't be true if it's not N by N, right? So, yeah.
Yeah.
Um. Hold on, yeah, let me look at this example for one second, cause I remembered looking it over and I didn't understand one part. Oh, okay. Oh, wait, no, nevermind, hold on. I thought that made sense for a second. And then it didn't. Um, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll do it, but uh, I don't wanna, I don't also like, don't wanna confuse people, so I'll write it and maybe someone has an idea of like what's going on exactly, so. Um, I like kind of understand, let's give it a try. So T goes from R three to R four, okay? Uh, T of X Y Z is this. X plus Y, Y plus Z. X plus Z. X plus Y plus Z. Okay, so it goes from R three to R four. X plus Y, Y plus Z, X plus Z, X plus Y plus Z. So show that it's on to and one to one. So um, I can do one to one quickly, cause that's the one that doesn't fail. So one to one. Uh means that if I get, if I, if I'm doing T of XYZ. And I get zero, 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 that means that XYZ must be the zero vector. So, let's give it a try. If I take this and I get X plus Y, Y plus Z, X plus Z, X plus Y plus Z. Right, uh equals the zero vector. Right, then I can turn this into a into a uh homogeneous system, one, one, zero, zero, one, one. Uh one, zero, one. And one, one, one. And the RREF form of this. Is, I'm just gonna skip to that, is one, zero, 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 one, zero. Zero, zero, one, zero, zero, zero. Right, so um. So, okay, first of all, well, okay, first of all, this is X equals zero, Y equals zero. Z equals zero, so it passes this test up here. Right, so it passes this test right here, yes, XY, the only solutions for XYZ in this case is X equals zero, Y equals zero, Z equals zero. Um you can also tell from this that the rank is equal to three, the rank of this is three. And the rule that we said before is that it's gonna be, so that we're saying, by doing this, we're saying, yes, it's one to one. And we said up here that uh. If T is one to one, if and only if the rank of the matrix representation is the input, the dimensions of the input. Dimension of the input is three, rank is three, so it's definitely one to one. Um and so the second thing was T is on two, if if and only if the rank of T is equal to M. Uh and we can see that the rank of T is three, which is not equal to M, so it's not on two. So, not on two. Um, the part of confusion was that, so I, I don't know if this is a good enough answer, um. I mean, it probably is actually, but the part of that I was confused about is is how he goes about actually proving that it's not on two, using like the method from before. Um, so I'll just show that quickly and then, so we we know it's not on two, because the rank doesn't match up. And this is, this is, this is more of, let's try to figure this next part out together a little bit here, so um. Um. Uh if we have, if we get an arbitrary vector in R four in the output space, A, B, C, D. Right, we wanna show that there is some T of X that gets us A, B, C, D. Someone's got their mic guy. Or and is playing some music or something, okay, I think. I think we're good, okay, um so um. Uh the transformation was X plus Y, Y plus Z, X plus Z, X plus Y plus Z. Okay. And I wanna show that this is equal to A, B, C, D, and show that any vector A, B, C, D is some solution for. So, once again, he takes this um one, this will be one, one, zero, zero, one, 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 zero, one, one, one. Augments it with A, B, C, D. And the RREF form of this. Is. Is, so one, zero, 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 one, zero, 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 oh, I wrote that a little bit too close together, zero, zero, one, zero, zero, zero. Augmented with uh D minus B. B plus A minus D. D minus A. B plus C plus A minus two D. And. So. What he says this proves, and now this is the part that, so everything like, I could, I could do all this leading up to this. But what he says after this, I'll, I'll just write exactly what he writes, so I'll write that in a different color, this is exactly just what he wrote, he said, pick. A equals one. Right, so then B equals C equals D equals zero. And then just the vector one, zero, zero, zero. Is not an element of uh of T of R three. Um and yeah, that's it. I don't know.
Wait, what does that prove again?
What is, what, this is, this is somehow, this this proves that it is um. That it is not on two, not on two.
Uh from this morning's study hall, it shows that.
This is from Horowitz, this is from Horowitz's lectures, Horowitz's lectures.
Oh, but it's uh inconsistent uh system.
If A is one, then it is consi-. Oh, no, it is, it's inconsistent, you're right, yeah, 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 sorry, sorry, okay, 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 never mind, okay. So, yeah, if A is one, then this would be inconsistent. Oh, okay, so we, oh, yeah, yeah, so this actually proves to us that all that matters is that B plus C plus A minus two D. Uh has to equal zero, has to equal, has to equal zero. And any other combination that makes this not equal to zero doesn't work. It would be an inconsistency, inconsistent thing, there you go, that's what it is. And so all he did was to 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 show an example of this not being zero, he just, he did this, he picked A was one and the rest were zero. And so, and and so that is not a ma- that is not a vector in the output of T, because it makes this inconsistent.
I didn't get that.
Yeah, so, uh remember from from our, like, from from doing RREF, if you have a row of zeros before the bar. And then a number after it, what you're pretty much saying is that zero equals some number, right, some some one or five or something, which can't be true. So, the uh when you see a row of zeros like that, what that means is that this thing after has to be zero. And if it's not, then it's inconsistent, then it breaks the, it breaks the system. So, from that we get this, B plus C, B plus C plus A minus two D has to be equal to zero. And if you can find any example of a vector in R four, right, in the output space. Um in R four, in the output space, that breaks this rule, for example, if A equals one. And B equals C equals D equals zero, it would be zero plus zero plus one minus two times zero equals zero, one equals zero. So it, what what that proves, the fact that this broke, is that this vector is not an output of T. Is not in the, isn't, so notice it's not an element, not an element of the output of T. Okay?
Oh, is this, is this proving that it's one to one, not one to one, or uh?
On two, it's proving it's not on two.
But then in the other one, you were saying that it is on two.
Not.
When you go, you uh showed that, like when you did the RREF.
Here.
And you made, and yeah, here.
Not on two.
Oh, okay, I read that wrong, I read that.
Okay, there you go, that's what it is, don't worry, don't worry, yeah, it's not on two. So it's not on two, we already know, because the rank is not equal to the the dimensions of the output space, but to actually prove it. You'd put it through RREF and realize, oh, there's a restriction, there's a restriction on what the output vector can be, right? This is, this is just a rearranged form of the output vector, right? There's a restriction, and the restriction is that this has to be true, it has to equal zero. And any output vector in R four that makes this not true, such as this one, right, or this this one here, which is the same thing. Uh will not be in the output of T. Therefore, it is not on two. Okay. Talking things out really helps, right, that's so, I, reading this, I didn't understand at all what it was doing. And then, yeah, and then someone said, it's inconsistent, then, oh, yeah, okay, that's what, that's what it is. Right? Okay.
All right, so just a quick thing, um, do you think we have to do all of this on the test, or like, could we just use the simplest form of whatever we have to prove?
Like doing the uh, doing the, just like showing the rank, showing that the rank doesn't ma- match up?
Yeah, the rank or like the the column, zero column, zero, whatever.
Hmm, um. I don't know, I don't know.
They just did the dimension, it just be like all the dimensions don't match, for the solution.
Oh, they just did that in the solutions for the previous test? They just said like the ranked, okay, then there you go, so then you can just do that.
All right, perfect, thanks.
So like skip all this.
I guess so, but this is like why it actually doesn't.
Yeah, this is just like a ton of proves.
Right, this proves that it's not on two, like actually why, and like here's.
It's like when we're doing the linear combination proofs, it's like something like that.
Yeah, yeah, it's like that, right, it's it's just like you're proving something, right?
I hope they don't ask for proofs on this.
Well, I think nine point one, they will ask for nine point one, right, because that's pretty much all there is in nine point one, is you prove something is a vector space, or you prove something is a, or some part of it, something being a vector space, right? Okay, that's it for five point five, any questions for five point five?
Nah.
We're good, I think we're good, okay.
Go both.
Yeah, you gonna say something, or?
Nah. Where do we, what what chapter was it, our unit, was it like MB two, B one, like the basis, I still don't get that.
That's five point eight, that's five point eight, uh I also don't get that, so that'll be in, that'll be an adventure when we get there, okay, so.
Well, I don't get linear.
What'd you say, sorry?
I'm saying I just don't get linear algebra period, but it's okay.
Okay, well, we'll, you know, we're working on it, we're working on it, we're putting the work in, so let's, let's, hopefully make some progress. Um, let's move on to five point six unless anyone has any other questions. Um, five point six is isomorphisms. Okay, isomorphisms, okay, I can spell that, but not columns. Um and so um. It's, it's just that something is uh one to one and on two, right? So T is an isomorphism, T, which at whatever goes from RN to RM, uh well, actually, it has to go from RN to RN, doesn't it? It doesn't actually say that it has to be go from RN to, well, actually, it has to go from W to V, which are, these are subspaces, okay, subspaces. So, well, just put an arrow like that, yeah, the other subspaces, so it it can go, like, the subspace could be all of R two, so it's not really a subspace, it's just the vector space. Um unless that is still a subspace, I don't know, we'll, we'll see in nine point one, I guess. Um, or it could be a specific subspace of RN. Okay, so. Uh T goes from W to V is an isomorphism. Is an isomorphism. Uh if and only if uh T is one to one and on two. And so if you try to, try to picture what's going on here, right? It's transforming, let's say we're going from R two to R two, it's transforming space such that. You start with all of R two, right, or not all of R two necessarily, but all of uh s- some subspace, right? Let's imagine it's all of R two, right? And after the transformation, it's still. You can hear? Can anyone else hear me?
No, you're good.
Yeah, I can hear you, you're good.
Yeah, I can hear you, you're good.
Me refresh that.
Um, so, you're taking all of R two and you're applying a transformation to it that is, first of all, on two. So it maps back onto all of R two again, and it's one to one, so it literally just shifts every vector into some rotation and some stretch or something, right? And so the word isomorphism means kind of like same, same shape, right? Same. Shape, ah, I guess, shape, right? Because you start with all of R two and you end with all of R two, just kind of rotated and stretched, but it's not really like a different shaped thing, it's it's a, it's it's still like the same thing. It's, it would be different if you like went from R two to R three, right? And also it wasn't one to one, so some things like collapsed into each other, right? So that's, that's what an isomorphism is, it's a transformation that, you know, kind of keeps the same shape as the input space. Um, so to prove.
Does that mean, oh, sorry.
No, no.
Does that mean that uh for the dimension it has to go from like RN to RN, or like. It like R three to R three, or can it be like R three to R four or something?
I don't think, I don't think it can be from R three to R four, I think I'm, I don't see any reason why that would work, yeah.
For the same dimension, okay.
I'm like, I'm nine, ninety-nine percent sure, I'll be a hundred percent sure once I see it written somewhere. Uh, so I I don't see any reason why that would.
I didn't see it in textbook or anything, like.
So, the fact that they don't say it, then then maybe it is somehow possible, but I don't, I don't know.
I don't know, all the examples are for RN to RN, like, R two to two or whatever. So.
So, to prove that something is an isomorphism, pretty much the same as last chapter, just prove that it is one to one and it is on two, sorry, to prove that a transformation. Is um. An an isomorphism, you just have to prove that it's one to one and on two. Um, which I can do, but it's up to, you know, don't have to. Um. Image. Um, an important thing, yeah, another important thing is that before the transformation, it has to take the basis, right? So the subspace, a base, um uh. The basis, not basis, basis, that's the word I was looking for, I keep forgetting the word basis for some reason. So it has to take the basis for W, right, and turn it into a basis for V. Which, which it will, for sure, right, let's say this is, this is V, and this is W, right? So it will for sure because it's one to one and and on two, right, so there's no way that it wouldn't. Um, let's say, for example, if a transformation did this, it took W. Right, it took W and then it put the two vectors, the two direction vectors on top of each other, right? Well, this would be, this would still, well, actually, I guess they would be, they'd be literally the same length on top of each other, right? Well, this would not be an isomorphism, because first of all, so not, not isomor- phism. First of all, because you're, you're like crushing down two D space into a line, but also because it's not one to one anymore, right? It's not one to one, because two vectors land on the same spot. So there's two reasons that it's not isomorp- an isomorphism anymore. Right, but it, it's like, so it's, an isomorphism isn't like a separate test you have to do, it's, it's really just reliant on these two things, right? And the idea that it has to create a base for the output space, a basis for the output space, is the same thing as saying it has to be one to one. And on two. So. So, um. If T is an isomorphism and invertible, T inverse is also an isomorphism. I think it has to be invertible, I think it'll always be invertible, I don't see why it wouldn't be. Um, if T and S are isomorphisms, then T of S is also an isomorphism. And, and T is an isomorphism if and only if T is invertible, what I said before, there you go, so it has to be invertible. Because the only time it's not invertible is if something like this happens. Because then, let's say, you're trying to go backwards from this back to that, you don't know. It's, it's really hard to tell what's exactly gonna happen to all these vectors on this line without first going in the forward direction. If you were just going in the backwards direction, it's, it's really hard to tell what would happen to other vectors in here, right? Which is why, it, not just really hard, it would be impossible, that's why the inverse doesn't exist. So, this, this will never happen for an isomorphism. So the inverse will always exist.
All right, just a quick question, I'm, I'm like a bit confused as to what the actual word means, like, do you have a similar kind of comparison from calculus or something?
Isomorphism?
Yeah.
Um. Let me think from calculus. Isomorphism, it's um.
Or like a function, if you give an example of a function, like it would make more sense, I just never get the word, I understand, we have to define it, but.
Well, I just think that you can say that the whole function W is, it's on the whole thing, and it's like. And it's, okay, no matter, I don't see this, and I.
It's, it's pretty much that, it's pretty much that if you imagine three in three D, okay, you have some kind of, you have some kind of bubble, or let's say like you have a, you have a slice or something like that. You have, let's say you have a s- uh like a plane that crosses through here, I'll use the, use the picture from last thing here, let's see. Um, plane. Plane through three D. See what happens if I look at that. Uh.
All right, there you go.
Let's say like, say you have like this, okay, and actually I'll move that into my, move that into my uh one note here. So, if you, let's for, let's say for example, oh no, did I just move everything? So, if you, let's for, let's say for example, oh no, did I just move everything? Uh, yeah, I did, well, that's fine, so, so. If, let's say for example, the base, the basis, I keep saying the wrong word, the basis for this subspace, this plane is this and this. Okay, imagine those are like flat against the plane.
Right.
An isomorphism would take that subspace and after the transformation, it would have the same shape. Maybe imagine the plane like rotating this way, right, rotating that way, maybe like, I don't know, pi degrees, like pi degrees. And also like stretching out by two, right, so I don't, I can't really draw it, but imagine it like rotating, staying still parallel. Rotating and stretching out by two, at the end, all of the points on that plane have moved, but it has the same shape at the end. Right, it has the same shape, right?
I don't know if you did advanced functions, you know, when you did like transformation with a function, like you bring it up by two or you stretch it. It's kind of something like that.
The thi- the thing is, if you like multiply a function by two, it, it literally like stretches, it looks different, the shape is different, right? But here, if you just imagine as this flat sheet of paper, turning it and stretching it out by two, it, the shape is the same, right? All the points are transformed, but the shape of the whole subspace is the same.
Yeah, one more thing, you said, you said these two lines for the basis, but if it's in three dimension, wouldn't it have like three bases?
Well, R three would have, uh, three, uh, that would have a dimension of three, like they would have three basis vectors. But we're talking about this plane, this plane is a two dimensional slice.
So it's in R two.
Well, it's in R three, but it is a two D object, it's a two D object, so it only, so it only needs two direction vectors, right, two basis vectors.
Yeah, that makes more sense, like, when you think of it, like geometrically, I guess. And that's why it has to be on two and one to one, I guess.
Yeah, cause if it was not one of those, then you'd break some rule.
Right.
You'd be somehow turning it, or you'd be somehow, something, you'd be doing something that would break that.
Yeah.
Confused with the basis thing, with what, like, what's the basis then?
Basis of what? Because this, this is a subspace, this is W, the whole thing is in R three.
Yeah.
So the, the green thing is just a flat sheet, it's just a infinitely thin flat sheet in R three, it only needs two basis vectors. Because it's a two D.
It's like, imagine if you drew like two lines on a paper and then you hold that paper in the real world, which is three D. And imagine that paper is two D, and you start moving that paper around, it's still in two D, but like you're in R three, I guess.
Okay, okay, okay.
And any point on this plane can be described by only these two vectors. Any point on the plane, you can describe it as a linear combination of those two things. What'd you say, sorry?
Right, it's like, so then this would just be X and Y, but like.
It'd be like I had and J had, it'd be like I had.
Yeah, okay, there, I get it now.
Just, just on that plane, just on that plane.
Yeah, yeah.
You wouldn't call it I had and J had because it's not centered at the origin, I mean, I guess you could center it here and that would be the origin, but. It's a, it, it's just the basis vectors, it, it, it acts the same way, it acts the same.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that is isomorphisms, uh, we'll do some stuff now about it, let's see, so. Um, yeah, so if, if T is an isomorphism. Uh, is this, just if it's an isomorphism, let me.
Um, can you just repeat this thing about, um, isomorphism and it being invertible or non-invertible?
Yeah, sure, so when something is not invertible, when something is not invertible, that means it's, it's crushing all of space into a lower dimension. Right, so let's say for example, we start in, let's say for example, we start in R three, okay? And after the transformation, we get this plane, we get just this plane of, of stuff, right? Actually, okay, that, that won't really work, I'll choose a different example, so let's say, we'll say we start in R three, okay? So this is my R three basis vectors, and at the end, everything's crushed down into just this plane that passes through the origin. That's why it didn't work, cause it has to pass through the origin, right? Everything, all of space is crushed down into just this, right, so, actually, maybe I'll just try like that, oh boy, erase everything. It goes behind, that goes like, I really don't go under, I guess. Alright, and then that goes, I don't know, anyways, wow, okay, sorry, bad drawing, but that's a plane that passes through the, that passes through the origin, okay? So what, what happens is that, at some, after the transformation, this basis vector would have to go down onto the plane. Right, and so now it would become that, right? Right, this basis vector would also meet the plane, maybe it's already on the plane or something like that, let's just say it's already on the plane. And this basis vector would already, would also go on the plane, right? What happens then is that the, the, uh, the set of these three vectors is not linearly independent anymore. Right, because you're on two, you have three vectors as a basis for two dimensional space. So it's not linearly independent anymore, so what you've done is you've, you've crushed everything into a lower dimension. The reason this isn't invertible, right, is because, like, let's say like right here, this, this point on the plane right here. There's an, a whole line of vectors that got mapped to that, right? So, you know what, let's see if I can pull the, let's see if I can pull the three blue, one brown video for this, cause I'm not very good at drawing. So let's say three blue, it's right there, so. Uh, playlists. Uh, and it would be at. Matrix multiplication, three D transformations. Okay, answer that, let's see if I can just find the part here. Here, let's see here, is this it?
Well, three blues to go.
See if I can find it. No, that's not working.
This is what linear algebra should really be, honestly, not the test.
It should, is it gonna squish everything? I'll find it, it is, it is important, here inverse, here, talk about inverse, so it, this is probably where it's gonna be. Right, so, so notice here. I'll find it, I'll find it, here. Okay, now, here, 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 okay, so, what's happening in, I think, the next thing? We gotta turn on the volume for a second. So notice, all of two D space right in that, in that shot right there, so that's, that's, that's the thing that I want you to see, right? So. You had, you had two D space, all of R two, and the basis vectors are now linearly dependent to each other, right? They're in a line, all of two D space there got crushed into, got crushed into a one dimensional line, right? And this, everything got put into one dimension to a smaller dimension. There's no function that un- undoes this, right, so that's what the screen says, it says right there, right, there's no function that undoes that. There's only the, the only, there's only the transformation that puts that there, undoing it is because. You think a single vector, that one vector that landed there is actually a whole line of vectors that landed there. Because it was crushed into a lower dimension, that whole line of vectors got mapped to just that yellow vector right there. And there's no function that has an output, right, so you're looking for a function, function has one output. But you're expecting the function to have an infinite number of outputs, this whole line here, right, and that just can't happen. So there's no transformation that will undo. Right, there's no function that can undo it like this is showing right here, there's only a function that can do that in the first place. And so that happens when a determinant zero, separately, that happens when something's not an isomorphism, or it can happen when something's not an isomorphism. Right, because an isomorphism would never let, uh, would never let this happen, right? Would never let these, the, these two vectors crush into a line like that. Okay, so that's there, that's the explanation, that's my explanation with, with this animation, hopefully that made sense.
It made sense, but I, um, is there an example for like, you know, with numbers?
Well, with numbers. With numbers, it's like, um, let me think, how, how would this show up in numbers? It's sort of like.
Understood and abstractly, but if I were to do this, I would not be able to like, you know, physically solve it.
Solve, solve what though, like, what, what, what's the, the question being asked, right, that's, that's the thing, cause this is just sort of like a thing to, to define an isomorphism. In a way to define.
Isn't it, uh, if it's just one to one and on two, it's an isomorphism?
Yeah, and so this, this, the, the reason that that's true is because this wouldn't happen. And the reason that an inverse doesn't exist is because this, this wouldn't happen if it's an isomorphism.
Okay, I got you, I got you.
Yeah.
Right, this wouldn't happen, so yeah, so that's why an inverse doesn't exist sometimes too, because it cannot do that.
Say that, say that again with the numbers just now?
Well, just that, if something's, an is- something is an isomorphism, if it's on two and one to one. If that's the case, this will never happen, where things get crushed down into a lower dimension, right, where things get crushed down to a lower dimension. Because this would mean that something, it's not on two anymore, and it's also not, it's also not one to one, right? And so, um, that, and so kind of what this, started this is saying that it has to have an inverse. Right, it has to have an inverse, because this also means that there's no inverse if this happens, and that's the only time.
Yeah.
Because there's a single vector, gets turned into a line of vectors when you undo it. Right, okay, so there's that. Um, any other questions about that stuff?
So wait, the only like questions is just to prove if it's, you know, on two or one, on one to ones, it's isomorphic?
Yeah, if it's both, then it's isomorphic.
Yeah, that's it, there's no actual beyond that.
No, that's, that's pretty much it, although it, it isn't like, it isn't the simplest thing, right, it isn't like. Um, here, let's see, let's try one example here, and I think this makes more sense, yeah. Hopefully this will work, it's a pretty long example, honestly, but, so, example. Let, um, V equals, this is a subspace, um, A, B, C, D, D. Okay, uh, is in R four, such that. A plus B minus two D equals zero. Right, uh, that's the subspace, show that V is isomorphic to R three. Show V is isomorphic to R three. And what that means is that there is an is- there is an isomorphism, right, so that means is that. Uh, pretty much, show that there is an isomorphism. Between V, V and R three. Right, show that there is an isomorphism, that's what isomorphic, that's what a subspace being isomorphic to another subspace means, is that there is an isomorphism. Between two, a transformation that is isomorphic. Okay, so, uh, he did it in two ways, first way I looked at, doesn't really make sense to me. The second way, I think I figured it out, so let's give it a try. So. Um, oh, one important thing that I, I mentioned before, but I'll mention it again, is that if we can show that V. That a, a transformation T, which goes from V to R three, that's what we're looking for. We're trying to prove that T exists and that it's isomorphic, um, but if we can also prove this. R three to V, right? If we can prove that that's isomorphic, then this will also be isomorphic, because the inverse is isomorphic, if, if the normal function is isomorphic as well. Right, so that's the method that this one takes, is that we're trying to prove this, this bottom one, T goes from R three to V. Prove that there's an isomorphism between that. So, um. So first, let's take a look at our, uh, subspace, let's take a look at our subspace, okay? So our function T is gonna take in a vector in R three, right, X, Y, Z. And it's gonna spit out a vector in V, what does that mean to be a vector in V now? Well, to be a vector in V, let's move that down here, okay? V, uh, equals the set A, B, C, D. Um, um, E, R four, such that, um. Uh, what was it, such that A plus B minus two D equals zero, right? So that's what it means to be in V, now we want a vector, now it looks like it's gonna be a vector in R four, right? So we know it's gonna be a transformation from R three to R four, and that wouldn't make sense, because. Well, yeah, yeah, okay, so, uh, yeah, hold on, don't forget what I said there, because it's not. It, I guess it technically is true, cause this is going to R four, but it can still be an isomorphism. Um, uh, and I'll, I'll explain why when I'm done. So first of all, let's get a nicer form of this subspace, I can take this equation and rearrange it for A equals two D minus B. So alternatively, this subspace can be written as the set of all vectors such that the vector is. Two D minus B, B, C, D. Which is an element of R, uh, three, uh, R four, sorry, it's an element of R four. And one thing I want you to notice here is that this subspace, although it's in R four. It is a three dimensional subspace, three dimensional. Three di- dimension, no, I'm struggling with spelling, just like this plane is in R three, but it's a two dimensional object. This subspace is in R four, but it's a three dimensional object. The reason I know it's a three dimensional object is because it has three different variables, right? If we go back to our chapter four knowledge, right, we can, uh, find the basis for this subspace by just breaking it up into linear combination of these variables. And so you'd have four, four basis, basis vectors, uh, so you'd have three basis vectors, sorry, three basis vectors, and that's what it means to be three dimensional. So that's why this still works, it's, I mean, that's why it can still be an isomorphism, because we're going from R three to R four. But a three dimensional subspace of R four, so we're really going from three dimensions to three dimensions, so we're still good. So, back to it now, right, so we want, um. How do I write that, let's see. Oh, okay. Um, let's just, hmm, sorry, let me just figure this out for a second. Oh, okay, okay, let's, uh, for just, for just to, to make it seem more like the question, let's replace A, B, C, and D with X, Y, Z. Right, so I'll just write A, B, C, D. Equals X, Y, Z, W. Although he doesn't use. Oh, oh, you know what he does, okay, okay, it's just confusing what the, what the, he does, but okay, I see, so technically. He does this, he does W, X, Y, Z. Doesn't really matter, but notice that A doesn't show up here anywhere, so we will not have a W anywhere there. The reason I do that is because I don't want a W, because my input is just in terms of X, Y, Z, right, so I wouldn't wanna have a W. Right, so this is W, X, Y, Z, the variables we're actually using. So.
Wait, so why not just not include A and W?
Uh, well, we, we aren't including it here, it's not, it's not here, right, we're not, there's no A or W in this, in this one, and there won't be after. Right, because I set A equal to W. Right, but.
Okay.
The, the variables that are here have B, C, uh, X, Y, and Z.
I have a question, let's say instead of, uh, you're doing A's, you put to two D minus B, you do B. So that'd be, uh, two D minus A, and then you make, um, I guess your B equal to W, right, so you can just have X, Y, Z. So it doesn't matter, how you do it?
Should matter, shouldn't, I don't see why it would, but, who knows, but, yeah, it shouldn't matter. So that means that I can rewrite this, uh, subspace as, um, two Z minus X. X, Y, Z. Yes, I got it right. Uh, which is still an element of R four, right? But again, it's, it's three dimensional, so now we can take this, you can go down a little bit, and we can say T of. So now we can take this, you can go down a little bit, and we can say T of X, Y, Z is equal to two Z minus X, X, Y, Z. Well, look at this, we have a transformation now, right? We have a transformation that goes from um R two to R three. And what we need to prove is that this is an isomorphism. Yeah, we gotta just, we just have to prove that this is an isomorphism. Right, so we now we have a transformation to get from R three to B.
Is it R two to R three? Or did you mean?
It's R three to R four.
Okay, okay.
R three to R four, but uh again, a three dimensional piece of R four, just like this is a two dimensional piece of R three.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, right, so that's why it's still an isomorphism. So we'll just do the basic stuff to figure out if this is a isomorphism. Cat's trying to get in the bag. The opposite of what usually happens. She's 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 done. Um, to prove this is an isomorphism, right, to prove this is an ice, ah, isomorphism. Right, it has to be one, two, one, and on two. Okay. So to prove that it's one to one, um, we have to prove that if uh T of zero, uh sorry, T of X, Y, Z equals the zero vector, then X, Y, Z must have been the zero vector. In other words, two Z minus X, X, Y, Z equals the zero vector. Right? Well, this isn't too bad, right? We can see X equals zero, Y, well, so starting from the top. Two Z minus X equals zero, right? X equals zero, Y equals zero, Z equals zero. And this doesn't change anything up here, because it's just two times zero minus zero equals zero. Right? And uh, yeah, so the what this shows is that this is the only solution. Right, that's the only solution. So yes, well, I should just do it in green, shouldn't I? Uh, yes, it is uh one to one. Okay, now to prove that this is on two. To prove that it's on two, I have to be able to get an arbitrary vector in our in our subspace and prove that there's any, I can find X, Y, Z from that. So, um, I can uh, an arbitrary vector in the subspace would be this one right here. Right, so I can, if it's two D or, yeah, actually, I will use D here, so two D minus B. B, C, D, I think. B, C, D, yeah, that makes sense. So the arbitrary vector um equals T of X, Y, Z. Right? And yeah, this will work. Yeah, yeah, this will work the same way, actually, and it's gonna look kind of weird, because look, we're gonna have two D minus B, B, C, D. Equalling to, well, what's the transformation? Well, it's actually just this, pretty much, right? It's just in terms of X and Y, right? So it's gonna be two Z minus X. Two Z minus X, X, Y, Z. And well, look at that, we can prove that, um, well, actually, I don't know, maybe I shouldn't speak so fast, but what what we can see is that, okay, X equals B, Y equals uh C, and Z equals D. And all we gotta do is make sure that that first equation works too. Two D minus B equals two Z minus X. Right? And yeah, that will work, because it's two D minus B equals, uh, we said Z was D, right? So it's gonna be two D minus, we said X was B, so minus B. And yeah, that's obviously true, right? So that's true. So that there therefore, right, the vector B, C, D in R three is gonna map to this vector in the subspace. So therefore, yes, it's on two. And therefore it is an isomorphism. So any questions?
Don't they have to check if it's linear?
Uh, yeah, uh, I guess so. It didn't ask for that in the question, but I guess so, yes.
But that's like one of the rules, right? Like it needs to be linear, one to one and on two.
Well, I can write it as a matrix, right? So negative one, zero, two, one, zero, 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 one, zero, 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 one. Therefore, linear.
Okay.
Right, since I can write it as a matrix. This is the X column, Y column, Z column. Now it's a linear.
So if you cannot write it as a matrix, it's not linear?
It is linear. Oh, sorry, sorry. If you cannot write it as a matrix, then it's not linear.
Yeah, that's Okay, makes sense.
That's correct.
Wait, so in this case, I'm a bit confused. Wouldn't the um first column or the first row, I mean, no, in the matrix? Zero row, and then it wouldn't be on two?
Well, look at the matrix here. How many Xs do I have in the first first row?
Uh.
In in of of the definition of T.
Yeah, so it's one X.
Negative one.
Oh, yeah, negative one.
How many Xs do I have in the second one?
That's one.
One, zero, and the next two, right?
Yeah.
Then how many Ys do I have in the first two?
Uh, the first two?
Well, yeah, zero. They both have zero, right? So zero, zero, what about the third one? We have
One.
We have one. Zero, and then we have two Zs in the first row, right? No, none in the next, none in the next, one in the last.
Right, so if you reorder the rows, but if you reorder the rows, wouldn't you be able to make it R F with only three leading entries and then one zero row?
Um, so, yeah, but the thing is, is that that's okay, because the the point, um, hold on, like the the rank of, yeah, because because the rank of that, yeah, it would end up being one, 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 zero, 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 zero. Right?
Yeah.
And I see what you're saying. The rank of this is three, the rank of this is three, right? So rank equals three, and based on our definition, that would mean that it's only on two and not one to one, or no, it's only one, only one to one and not on two, right? Only one to one. One, two, one, uh, not on two. But the thing is, and the reason you say that is because the output space is in R four. Right? But the thing is, is that the output space is actually three dimensional. Right?
Yeah. Okay, I get that makes sense.
That's the thing, and so it does match the rank, and so we are good. It is actually on two.
So you don't have to just look at the matrix, you have to look at the input too as well.
You gotta look at like what's happening, yeah, you gotta look at everything.
That makes sense, yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Um, can you quickly go over how you got the uh matrix representation of T?
Yeah.
Two, yeah.
This this thing right here, how about I I'll rewrite it and nicer?
Uh, well, well, before that, like the two Z minus minus X.
Oh, that, okay, yeah, yeah. So how did I get this? Well, I got that from the, so the whole point is that we're looking for some transformation that takes something from R three and puts it in V. Right? So what I did is I said, okay, well, apply T to something in R three, and I want to get out a vector in V. Well, what does that mean to be in V? How do you know it's a vector in V? Well, you gotta look at the definition, right? So the definition of V was was this. Definition of V was that. I rearranged this to get that. And I substituted that in for A, we said A was that, so I substituted that in. Right, so we now we have a more compact version. Right? And what that let us do, the reason and the and the fact that I could do that means it's a three dimensional thing now, right? I knocked off one of the variables. Right? And then I wanted this in terms of X, Y, Z, right? Because that's what my input is, X, Y, Z. So uh, since it's four dimensional, it's gonna have a W, right? It's gonna have a a fourth variable, but I also wanna notice that I'm not using A in in here, so I'm gonna match up A and W together to to not do that, to not get that. And then if I just just do this, right, write that, I replace everything that needs to be replaced with X, Y, and Z. Then I have a general vector in V in the form with X, Y, and Z, in terms of X, Y, and Z. And then I just put that here.
Yeah, but that had to be given though, right? In R four, the A equal um two Z minus X or two B minus B. That's something that has to be stated, right?
Well, the this is what the question gave, this is what the question.
Oh, so they gave you the A plus B minus two A, two D.
Yeah, yeah, that's that's like the that's like the definition of the of the of V, of the subspace V.
Okay, yeah, makes sense.
That's the that's the definition of that subspace, right? Yeah.
Um, can you go down to the uh matrix? Um, so if let's say, uh, so you said that because uh or no, all the way to the the R F form of it. Uh, where did it go?
Here, this one?
Yeah, yeah, so you said that, um, you know, there's a, there's a zero row, but that zero row isn't accounted for because the input dimension is R three, so then it still is on two. Because it's just looking at the first three pivot columns or the leading entry columns. So if it was from R four to um to V, right, or the V space, then obviously this would be not on two.
Uh, then it would, yeah, it wouldn't be on two, right? It uh, well, actually, it could be. Yeah, it wouldn't be on two, it wouldn't be on two, you're right, yeah, it wouldn't be.
How's the rank on three? Then it's supposed to be like or wait, oh, wait.
Rank is the number of leading ones, right? Number of leading.
Oh, yeah. Wait, don't, then there's like one parameter, right? Basically?
There's no parameter in this.
There is no.
This this has no parameter. If we had a column of zeros, then there would be a parameter.
Okay. So three variables and the pivots, so, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, because we're solving, we're solving X, there's like, we're solving X, Y, Z, there's three variables, right? So it's okay that we have this column, it doesn't mean anything, really, doesn't just.
If the rank is equal to the dimension, then then uh it's on two. It's like the R, if you do R F and if the rank is equal to the input dimension, sorry, then it's on two.
Then it's one to one.
Is what I'm getting.
Then it's one to one.
It's one to one, okay.
If it's, yeah, if it's in, if it's equal to the output dimension, then it's on two.
Okay, 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 it's output, okay, thank you.
So input is it's one to one, output it's on two, um, yeah, output it's on two, that's what.
All right, thank you.
This question, was it from R four to R three?
It was from R three to R four. R three to R four. But but a a three dimensional piece of R four. So it's really from R three to R three. Does that make sense? Okay, so, um um see. No one's saying anything, okay. So that's isomorphisms, that's pretty much the hardest problem I could think of. I mean, I didn't think of it, but the the that I could, that I would imagine we would have. So.
You heard what's laughing asleep right now?
He's scheming up something, he's he's, yeah, he's got something planned for us. Um, so, uh, yeah, we have this, so that was isomorphisms. The next part is called, so five point seven, if everybody's good for me to continue on to five point seven, unless there's any more questions about this thing. I, it is six thirty, um. I don't, maybe we'll take a, okay, how about we take like just just a ten minute break? Okay, how we just take a ten minute, because I I do wanna keep going. Um, how about we take just a ten minute break, uh, just so, you know, it's good to don't overwork everybody, you know, although we we do have an exam tomorrow. Uh, and I'll uh, I'll keep going in about ten minutes, okay? So at three.
Can we, are we, oh, sorry, are after the break, can we do kernel and image and stuff? Is that very similar to?
That's exactly what we're gonna do next, that's five point seven.
Oh, okay, great, because that's the only one that I'm, if you're on, okay, thank you.
Okay, sounds good. So, yeah, so guys, so uh AFK screen, back at uh forty three or forty four, I guess. Okay, so see you guys in ten minutes.
By the way, does anyone know if the chem grades are gonna be changing before Monday, or is that just it?
Yeah, we don't have.
That's just your fi- um, exam mark.
Yeah, that's.
Final marks should be a little different.
It's still gonna be on the twelve, I believe, of.
Yeah, I know, like the final exam mark, because they were, especially in mine as well, like I had options that didn't have the answer or had, they were just like all four with the same number. I don't know if.
Give you the best mark?
Like right now, already? The one that I can see right now?
No, 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 not already, you're gonna have to wait for that.
Oh, okay, okay. That's why I was asking if the final.
He he himself said that, that they're gonna run your um final mark through all four methods, and then they're gonna pick the best one.
Okay. Because this one's kinda dark, crazy.
Anyone here betting on this last test for linear algebra to pass the class?
Me. I am.
I really need to at least just get a fifty, but.
Damn, I need above a fifty to pass this class, bro.
I got a seventy seven in the in the test too, so I think I'll be fine.
Yeah.
You're you're way fine, bro. That's one who's bringing my whole happiness down, bro.
Still not great.
Calculus unless he curves.
Cal, the thing is, I'm worried about is like.
Three definitely curving, bro. He's definitely curving that.
Because he made all three, well, not all three, just the third exam hard.
Does does everybody all feel the same way, like calculus, that third one is just, are, anybody do that first question? Right? You know, the first question was like a bunch of, uh, I forget what it is, but like E to the power of like eighteen X or something?
Derivative was so long to do, like. Twenty minutes doing that.
It was like two thousand or something, it's, it was crazy. It was not, it was not feasible. I don't know why they do something like that. Like they don't even control our.
It's not like we don't understand the concepts, because from anybody looking inside now will now think, oh, we don't understand the concepts, and that's why we did bad on them.
Is anybody finding, is anybody finding that like, they feel like they do decent on a test, like I felt like I did decent on the chem test, and all of a sudden I get a fifty eight on it? Like.
Bruh, no, that's all math test, bro. You feel decent, you do shit, you feel good, you do alright. You do, you say you do excellent, you do even more shit.
See, the the.
Really me for linear algebra, I feel like I'm doing good and then I find out.
Or, oh, uh, you know, the uh, you guys know like the the like the ma- remake test, right?
Mm-hmm.
Like for test two for both calculus and linear algebra, I did not do very good on, but the thing is, I felt like I did good, so I didn't decide to take. It's like I felt did good.
Understand the concepts, but we don't understand this guy's question, like what he's trying to ask.
It's not even, I don't understand his question, it's like, it's gonna take so long, like the test.
Yeah, that's the point.
I understand why, but not finishing the question. It doesn't, you are not able to check your mark, uh, your 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 reasoning if you made a typo or something, because that.
Cause it's not enough time.
Yeah, uh, like for example, in test, in test two remake, I on calc- on calcu- uh, on calculus, I made a mistake on on, no, in linear algebra, I made a mistake, I fo- I forgot to put the no, uh, the dimension. But I didn't have time, I was just rushing for finishing, you know? I think I, I forgot to put the dimension of the thing, but I calculated the the null, so you just need to put dimension e- equals to one.
The thing is, I've I've never, I've heard of them like seriously, like not curving the grades in a while, so I have no idea if they actually are gonna curve them or not.
So they appear.
There's gonna be a fifty percent like fail rate for like almost, at least.
Like.
They also say they don't.
I don't know about y'all, but.
And then here we are, we got like four makeup tests, right? I feel like with like a hundred makeup makeup sex, and it was like every test, every week there was a test, or if there was, there was a makeup test.
Yeah.
Service for sure, is literally, this is not like any other year. They have like makeup tests on makeup test on makeup test, like every week I was like, oh, I have another test, I have another test. Oh, I have this makeup test.
What physics did, take the best two out of three, even Ken did the same thing. Why can't it take the best?
Not only that, chemistry, but chemistry, you add the quiz every week. But if you do, uh, like something like that, maybe it was better, you know?
Yeah, like chemistry.
I like chemistry because the weekly quizzes were like, are like fifty percent. That's like.
Yeah.
The whole the the exam, so if I do better in the exam.
I calculated my mark for like the best out of the four. And I still got a seventy four with getting a fifty eight on the exam.
It's, oh my god. Bro, the. They have for uh chemistry, bro, is so good, cause even if you do bad, you're still gonna do good.
Chemistry still, chemistry's fair. I I feel like every single class, like chemistry's fair, physics is fair. It's just these two math courses.
Yeah, literally, to be honest, it's only the science department at Ryerson understand that we're in the middle of a frickin pandemic. To be a little bit like more.
I I don't know, it seem like you have a calculator guy, so we can.
Yeah, and they.
That I think that is the reasoning.
They literally give us like uh e- uh questions that uh that you have to use a calculator, but like like. When we go back, it's a the, what's it called? When we go back in person, we're not allowed to use calculators in person.
No, the difficulty of questions would be, it'll be more like the past midterms. They're only doing it like this because.
It's, yeah, I know, they're only, I feel like, I feel like I get it. They're gonna, they they're gonna make it harder because it's online. But I feel like they're taking it above and beyond. They're taking it above and beyond.
Yeah, but you see, chemistry, because of that, for example, chemistry changed the element. They don't use the normal element. They use the riot. That is the reason because riot doesn't exist, so you need.
Yeah.
Whatever method Horace has in his head, cause.
And I know. The last physics midterm was a lot of like theory based questions. If anybody re- remembered.
Given a fair chance to do well. It's like a fifty fifty. You're given a fair chance. In this, it's either you do or you frickin die and go into depression.
The thing is.
Easier, but I guess science is more easier than this.
The opposite, until uh grade twelve, end of high school, your math marks were always higher than your science marks, but now it's flipped.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true, exactly.
I feel like I I'm hoping that like I'll pass calculus because we have calculus too, but if I fail linear algebra. I understand calculus more than linear algebra, but if I fail linear algebra, it's not needed until next first next fall.
I don't need it at all, cause I'm in chemical engineering, so I'm not that worried.
I'm just worried, cause considering how test three went, I know this man's gonna do some next level shit for test three and it's still not gonna be.
Cause he wouldn't wanna like curve both subjects, cause.
If you fail, you're gonna have to deal with Horowitz again, he's cause he's teaching it next semester.
And three emails like after every test.
Yeah. He's setting himself up for failure, basically.
Imagine a lot of people failed test three. I I hope it sends a message to the Ryerson department of what the math department's up to. They need to add a thing forever to the to the squad.
You think like the dean is like aware of the whole situation?
Like, wait, what is, what is the average grade that they try to get on each test, like sixty?
Sixty or seventy.
Like, I I remember, I think CPW or whatever said that the uh average last year was like a high seventy.
I wonder what the average was after linear algebra exam midterm one.
It was a fifty one.
Yeah, it was very low.
Guys, can we start?
Yeah.
We need a venting channel.
Yeah, that's true.
Alright, back to this.
Okay, so, yeah, everybody, we're we're back to it. Um, so let's start five point seven. Okay, so five point seven is. Is uh image and uh kernel and image. Kernel and image. Uh, it's essentially the null space, right? Kernel is essentially is not just essentially, I'm, it is actually identical to the null space that we did both like for a lot of time, right? And so, an image I've talked about before, right? So if I say, if I say T, if I say some, T is some transformation from R two. Which is from RN to RM. And I say T of RN, I'm pretty much saying apply T to every vector in RN, what's the output gonna be, right? Well, that's what the image, that's what the image of T is. Okay, so that's the image. And the kernel is the null space, right? It's the, all the vectors. Right? It's all the vectors that after you apply the transformation, you get a zero vector. Which, again, uh, is that the video? Would be all of these lines, right? All of those, all of those lines, cause this is playing in reverse, but if you imagine the transformation forward. Right? Get, let me get, get there. Oh, sorry, I went a little too far. Let me speed up a little bit. There, you see, so you see all those lines. Right? Well, sorry, they're not all in the null space. Sorry, that's a bad example. They're all in in, uh, they all get crushed down to nothing, but imagine if that happened to the zero vector. I think maybe later on, he does the null space example, let's see. Null space. Uh, yes, here we go. That's it right there. So, notice that after this transformation, so the transformation starts like this. Right? All of those vectors landed on zero. That whole line of vectors, that is the null space of that transformation. What just happened? Let me play one more time. Right? So before the, before the transformation, it looked like that. Right? That whole line of vectors after the transformation gets turned into the zero vector. So that's what, that's what the kernel, that's what the null space is. Um, yeah. That's, those are, those two things are the same. So, um.
Sorry, do do we need to study for the kernel for the exam?
Well, it's useful, it's useful, yeah, and it's part of the content. It's part of the content, right? So, um.
I'm still a bit confused, cause it's just like, you're saying that the kernel is still from mapping N to M, but with the image of T? Um, yeah, where, I don't get it.
This, this is the image. This is the image.
Okay.
That's the kernel. Separate things, separate, separate ideas. Every, uh, it's, it's pretty much, it's pretty much all the X values, right? All the X values. That when you apply the transformation, you get the zero vector.
Okay.
That's what the kernel is. So that's what, that's what this was showing in the video there, right? That whole line got turned into the zero vector. So that's, that's the kernel. That line is the kernel. All those vectors, when you apply T to it, it gets turned into the zero vector. Okay, so, um, so that's image, that's kernel. Uh, let's see what other things we have here. Uh, the kernel is, so if if um, if T goes from V to W. Subspace V to subspace W, then the kernel is a subspace of V, right? So it's a, it's a, it's a space in the. Don't know why that showed up. Uh, it's a, it's a subspace in the uh input space that gets turned into zero, so the kernel. Kernel of T is an element of V, right? So kernel of T and the image. Of T is an element of the uh, the of W. Right? So the the image of the transformation is some subs- is some part of W. Okay, so then find a basis, so, yeah, okay, so let's do an example where you have to find a basis for the image and a basis for the kernel. Of a transformation, right? We've done all this stuff before, and it's not gonna be anything new, and you've even done for the kernel in chapter four. It's just not a transformation, but of a subspace, right? And and for a matrix, so. You just called it a matrix in chapter four. You didn't call it a uh transformation, but that's the only difference. So let's do an example here. I have one. It's, uh, well, maybe we'll see if there's a exceptionally hard one. So let's do this. Um, it's, uh, let T go from R four to R two. So T goes from R four to R two. Someone's got their mic on and has got a loud keyboard, which is pretty cool, but.
Oh, sorry.
Little do that, don't worry, don't worry. Um, so T of X, Y, Z, W, right? So we're going from R four to R three is equal to X plus. Y plus C, negative X, negative Y, negative Z. Okay, and what we're looking for is to find a basis. For the kernel. Of T and separately find a basis for the um image of T. Well, I guess it's just I am, I am with T. Okay, cause remember, like I said up here, the kernel is some part of the input space, right? It's some part of the input space. In that example with the video is that line, that would be the, that would be the, you'd find the basis for that line. Uh, and similarly, the image is is the whole output, right? So you need a basis for the output. So a basis for the kernel, well, right, the kernel is where um T of. T of X, Y, Z, W equals zero, right? That's what, that's what we're looking for. And so let's plug that in, X plus Y plus Z. Negative X, negative Y, negative Z. Equals zero. Or zero, right? Um, and so. And so let's solve this. Let's put this in RAF, right? So one, 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 negative one, negative one, negative one. Uh, it's homogeneous, right? And so this is just one, 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 zero, zero, zero. Right? So we have, okay, we have uh X is equal to, uh, so we're gonna say Y equals T. Z equals S. Uh, actually, I won't use S, I'll use R, right? So X equals negative T, negative R. Y equals T, Z equals R. And so a basis for the null space, basis for the kernel, is a basis for this. Right? So if I were to write this, um, if I were to write X, Y, Z as a linear combination now, so I'll do it over here. X, Y, Z as a vector is equal to negative T, negative R, TR. Which is equal to T times negative one, one, zero. Plus R times negative one, zero, one. And this is a basis for the kernel, negative one, one, zero. Negative one, zero, one. All the vectors that are a linear combination of these two will be turned to zero after the transformation. That's what we said here. What gets turned to zero? Well, all the vectors that are some in the span of these two. Will be uh turned to zero, so basis. For kernel of T equals that set. Okay, and then what about the image? Well, the basis for the image is just the column space, is the basis for the column space. Of the RAF form, right? So if we take this, right, if we take this. If you take this, this here, okay, well, actually, we'll take the, just the RAF form, right? Which was one, 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 zero, zero, zero. Well, what's the basis for the um? Column space of this? Well, you take the first leading entry, okay, that that one, and you go back to the original matrix and take the first one there. Right? If, for example, we had a one here, then I'd also take the next one, but I, we don't have that, so I don't do that, right? So that vector is. Basis for the image of T is just the vector one, negative one.
Yo, I have, I'm not really sure what you just did.
To the one previously, the the one we did previously.
What about the one we did previously? What what?
No, no, previously, like, last test.
Yeah, last test, we must have had something like this, cause that was for chapter four, and you do the the same things, right? Right, yeah. It's just that now it's in the context of a transformation.
Yeah, so it's the same exact thing as column space for image and then null space for kernel, but it's just in terms of transformation.
Which is what we've been doing the whole time. You just never called it a transformation and you never understood it as a transformation. But that is just what we're doing the whole time. So, um, yeah, well, that's that. Uh, Horowitz did like some wicked question after this that I never, I didn't understand when he wrote it. I don't understand now, looking at it, so I think we should, I don't, I think we should just skip it. I don't know.
Can we not skip it because?
That one's gonna be on the exam, I'm.
I don't even, I honestly don't even think it's gonna be on the exam, because it's, it seems so far from anything we've ever done. I don't, I. I'll write it.
That is the summary of all the exams that we've done so far.
Yeah, I guess so.
Professor Horace is probably in chat right now, just like listen.
Don't underestimate a Horowitz and his power to make questions the hardest it could be.
No, I think they're because they're like variables and like they're not numbered. They're just variables usually, and that makes it harder.
It's gonna have solve with just a lot of variables, maybe, I don't know.
The last linear algebra test, you okay?
Yeah, it was, it was, it went, went well. Okay, note.
No, it's the quite opposite, what teachers.
In in my opinion, it's it's one or the other really for everybody, because if you're good in calculus, you're bad in linear algebra. If you're bad in calculus, you're good in linear algebra.
I think I'm better at linen, terrible at calc.
I'm the opposite. I think I'm way better in calc than I am in live. Which is great, cause I don't think uh linear algebra is gonna be, is I'm in chemical, so I don't even.
Nah, you're good. Yeah, I don't. Can you scroll up? Cause I I'm still like, I'm not getting the image versus the, what's, what's that? T H E R? Basis for what's it?
Kernel.
Oh.
K E R, K E R. Yeah, my Ks are weird. My Ks are weird.
So, uh. Wait, isn't the kernel uh zero thing? Uh, yeah.
Yeah, so we set T equals zero. I replace T with the definition of T.
Yeah.
Turn that into a matrix. Put that in RAF and saw what solutions. Well, the solutions happen here with those free variables. Right? So any of any, any vector, X, Y, Z, that's some linear combination of these two. Is gonna be turned to zero. That's what this is saying. It's gonna be turned to zero, because that's the solution to the homogeneous system. Is gonna be turned to zero, right? So these two things are the basis for the kernel. The basis for the null space, those are the same thing. Those are the basis for the kernel.
Um, I think I kinda get it, but just the part where, where do you get the T and the R? Is it just like free variables?
Yeah, from from my RAF here. From my RAF, right? So I have a leading entry, right? I don't have any other leading entries, so this must be a free variable column. This must be a free variable column.
So you said R and T and then you, yeah.
Right, so.
Then.
X is equal to, well, it would be, it would be X plus T plus R equals zero. So I rearranged that into this, but right away, right? So this, this is, this is X. Equals zero. That's what this, these ones are saying, right? But I just, I just turned that into. That.
So to get like the second free variable, you just kinda treat it like there would have been a third column or so on, to equate to zero. To say that there's another few variable, right?
There is a third column, though. There is a third column. There is, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, sorry.
Right, there is a third column. So you just, you do put the, you put the. Right, there is a third column, so you just, you do put the, you put the R for that call, you put the next three variable over for that call.
Yeah, and then you just said that, okay, so when you found this, that's, anything that's a combination of those two are even one. Perhaps it would be um, zero?
Yeah, because you can say, it's still a combination if it's just one, you could say it's one times this one and zero times the other.
Yeah.
Right, so it's still a combination.
Yeah, okay, makes sense, what about the image?
Image is just what it, like, the image is the uh, is the span of the output, right, so after the transformation. The space that you're in, right, what's the span of that output, well, it's just the span of the column space of the matrix. Column space of the matrix.
Sorry, what?
Just the span of the column space of the matrix. So that's, that's pretty much um, that's again, chapter four, right, so we just put, we take the matrix, we put it in RAF, right, so originally it was. One, 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 minus one, minus one, minus one, put in RAF, right? All the columns, all the columns are uh, all the columns that have a leading one are highlighted. And you pick the, pick the one from the original matrix, not from the RAF, or, or RAF version, right, that has the same thing.
Makes sense.
And so for the image, that vector got put there.
Yeah, that makes sense. This is, yeah, yeah, that's the image, okay, makes sense.
Okay.
This is literally chapter four.
This is chapter four, again, just in the context of a transformation, but that's the only difference.
Lucky me.
You know, sometimes I wish they said that when we actually learn it, so it makes sense.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I say it now, yeah, so. Um, so this is the question, uh, oh, sorry, I'm not even done, so define. Uh, define S sub A, which goes from R three to R two. By S sub A of X. Equals A X. Where? S composed with T. Oh, S, S sub A, composed with T, I guess it's a, it's not a, just write it with round brackets. Equals I D two, identity matrix, those two by two identity matrix. Uh, yeah, I think that's where the question, I think that's where the question ends.
I saw it in one of the, of the, I don't know.
So we have a trans, we have a, we have a transformation T, V is the image of T, that's not really important, I don't know why that's in there, V is the image of T, that doesn't really matter. Um, note, T.
What do you mean by I D two?
The identity matrix, the two by two identity matrix, so I D two.
Oh, like capital I two, okay, yeah.
Yeah, for some, I think the transformation is called I D two, so this is like the do no, do nothing transformation in R two.
Okay, thank you.
So. Well, okay, let's, let's.
If you're getting I D two, then isn't S and T like inverse of each other, cuz you're getting that, very true.
That's very true, and also, we can reinforce that by saying, this is, this one's going from R two to R three, this one's going from R three to R two, so. Okay, makes sense that they would be inverses, right, they, they don't have to be inverses just based on that fact, but they do have to be inverses based on this fact. Based on this factor here. So T is linear and one to one, find a two by three matrix A, so that's, that's the actual question, find a two by three matrix A. Uh, and define S sub A to be the inverse of T, is what this is really saying, define S sub B to be the inverse of, S sub A to be the inverse of T. Um, and so we're pretty much looking for, oh. Can we not just find the inverse of this? Oh, how can you find the inverse of?
Not the symmetry?
What kind of symmetry? Where do we see the, the symmetry of it being an inverse, yeah, then that's, that's what we'll use for sure, yeah. Uh, let's see what, let's see what Horace did.
Uh, wait a second, why is it specifically note T is linear and one to one?
Maybe he does it in the, maybe he does it in the thing here, um.
Cause it says that, doesn't say it's on two, so.
Yeah, right, so, okay, everybody like, maybe copy it down or something like that so they can think about it, cuz I'm gonna scroll away and it, it takes the whole screen, so I can't really show part of it. And so, give everybody just a second here. So, um, the solution, I got, this is not, nothing from my brain, this is from, just from the solution, so. Um, another two things he write here, he writes here is I E. The matrix representation of S sub A composed with T is equal to I two, just what we said. Same thing, right? I E, another I E.
You wrote I, is that S composed T or S composed I?
That's supposed to be a T here, yeah, it's supposed to be a T.
Okay, I was.
Yeah. A times the matrix representation of T. Yeah, that makes sense, is equal to I two. Which means that, doesn't that just mean that A is T inverse? Yeah, I think that does just mean that A is T inverse, yeah, that, that has to mean that, I think, so. Let's find T inverse, and let's see if that's the answer, so T inverse is um. Well, let's take the matrix representation of T, so that'd be one, three, two, one, negative one, one. One, three, two, one, negative one, one. Now, hold on, find the inverse of this, how's that gonna work? Because, I guess I can just augment it, but it's not in our, it's not in our.
Oh, hey, wasn't there some property with the? With the composition, right, composition of these two?
So yeah, so what, yeah, something like that, so it's what, what he does is, is this, one, one, zero. He puts the ident, the three by three identity matrix here, oh, I think this makes sense, actually, hold on. He was, so this is how you find the inverse, this is like how we were first introduced to find the inverse of something, is you put the, the, you know, the correct size identity matrix here augmented. And then put it in RAF, okay, put in RAF, so, um.
How does that work, it's not a three by three?
Yeah, you're right, and I wouldn't think it would work, but that's what he does, I don't have any other. So.
What, it's always, we can't find inverse unless it's a square, right?
Question like this one too much, it's true.
Well, no, I think it, I think, um, let me think.
Who defied the law of physics, he defies the law of math.
Yeah, that doesn't really make sense that there would be a two by two, but let, let's just see the, what he does, so after RAF, this is in RAF, now it's gonna be one, zero. Zero, one, zero, zero. And here on this side is gonna be negative one, zero, one, two, oh, minus one. Five, one, minus four.
That's what he has, or you just?
This is what he has, this is just copying from, copying from uh, the text, and what he does is, notice, this is the. Uh, I two, this is I two here, right, that's I two, so he just picks this to be my, right, the question asked for a, a two by three. Two by three matrix A, he picked that and just said that's A.
Bro, what?
Oh, oh, what, what does this even mean, I know, I, I'm genuine.
That's ridiculous, that's so weird.
It does actually work, it does actually work, if we take this matrix representation, minus one.
Yeah, it works.
One, two, I can't see it, two, oh, minus one, right, multiply that by the matrix representation of T. Which was one, three, two, one, minus one, one. This will give you one, zero, one, uh, one, zero, zero, one.
Okay, so just something quick, um, I don't know if you wrote it up there in the question, but is this going from R two to R three?
Um, T is going from R two to R three.
Okay, that makes sense then, because if you put it in, like, for example, if you have a transformation, you have to have the, the columns, I believe, the columns or the rows, I don't remember. Of the transformation, but you have to have the, I think, rows of the original, right?
Since you have a zero, we just ignore the last row.
Guess so, like, that makes sense, it makes sense, but I would never, ever think of doing this by myself. No, never, ever.
How does he expect people who are not in his class to know this?
I don't know. Well, also, remember, he, he doesn't write every question, so you, you know, you, like, I guess he. Well, I guess that's true, he wouldn't, I don't know, would he put a question like this because he taught it, would he expect the other professors to teach it, maybe, I don't know.
It's her own, you can never expect.
I don't know, I don't know, yeah.
Look at the exam though, all the professors.
But only, only one professor makes one question, so each professor makes one question, so. It comes out.
You had R three to R two in the question for S A, right, what did that mean?
Uh, all that means is that S, S A has to be defined, and S A is the inverse, right, we, we showed that S A is the, is gonna be the inverse. Right, and all that means is to show that it is an inverse is that it's going from R three to R two, the opposite of T, which is going from R two to R three.
Well, that's why of each other they just get the identity uh, matrix.
Well, it also tells us that in the question.
Yeah.
Right, it also says S A composed with T is the identity matrix, right, so that's how I know that it does that.
Hey, uh, what is uh, D two mean?
I D two?
Yeah.
Right here, so it means, it means the, the two by two identity matrix, specifically this.
Write the, the two subscript.
Yeah, why is this and this different?
Or the two by two.
Why, why are these two different, this is a transformation, this is a transformation. Formation, yeah, and this is a matrix.
Oh, okay.
So, uh, the, the um, matrix representation of I D two is equal to I two.
Oh, okay.
So like, so that line where you have A and T equal to I two, that's just the, what is it, that's just the first line, okay, yeah.
Because we said, we said S, S A is induced by A, right, S A is induced by.
And if it was like a.
No, it's all right, go.
All right, go ahead, go ahead.
Yes, it's, I was literally just saying, it's just saying A of T again equal to the identity matrix. Basically.
That's right, well, it's not really A of T, careful, it's, it's, the transformation, it's actually should be, A is a matrix, right, A is a matrix. So it's the matrix A times T is the identity matrix.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so I was saying, if you were going from R two to R three, it would be I D three, right, because you're transforming to R three, the. The identity matrix for the three by three matrix, right?
That's, that's I three, that's I three, but in this case, we are going from R two to R three, but it gives it, tells us in the question that S A composed with T gives I D two.
Oh, wait, no, but you wrote S, S A is R three to R three, R two.
Yeah, yeah, so, right, so, so we're going from, uh, wha, what this is pretty much saying is that they're undoing each other. Right, if you get an identity matrix out, that means these two functions are undoing each other, right? Um, and so just out of it, you get the starting, so you see, you're going from R two to R three, and then S A is going back from R three to R two. So out of it, you're gonna get the two by two identity matrix.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Okay, where, where does the V equal image of T coming?
Nowhere. Don't know why I was there, it, he wrote it, and I wrote it down too, but uh, didn't come in anywhere.
Okay, go.
Hey, you go, you go.
No, the thing, um, the, in, original function was just asking for T from R two to R three, right?
That's right.
Original, original question is asking just for T from, um, T, R two to R three, right?
Well, what do you mean the original question, this, the, the question is this, right here.
But didn't have to do with the whole example at the top, or that's something different?
No, no, that's part of the, the question starts here, the question starts here, but the actual question is this, this line right here, find matrix A.
Okay.
The information just starts at the top. Right?
Okay, yeah.
I still don't know why he did that, like, bar thing, like, why he did the stuff.
Well, do you remember doing it like in chapter two, to find a matrix inverse?
Yeah, but which inverse are they?
With the inverse of T. So even though T is not a N by N matrix, it's still, obviously, because this happened. Right, it still must have an inverse, because there is some function that you can apply to it to get the identity matrix. So that's, that's what an inverse is, right, that's exactly what an inverse is, so my, my, my guess is that. The, the fact that it's weird might mean that T of S A does not equal the identity matrix. So, a true, a true inverse would work both ways, but since this is not square, I think the opposite will not work, let's actually try it, let's see what happens. So if I do T.
Yeah, they just, so they actually gave us T of a function, and they gave us the matrix representation, right, and then that's why you used to, you work backwards with the.
They gave us T, they gave us T.
So, and then you, can you scroll down? Yeah, so right here, you just use the coefficient representation of it, and then with the T by three ma, matrix representation to get it. To get A.
And then this is RAF. Right, and since I'm, since I get at the, the I two here, then that's, that's the inverse.
Okay.
We haven't, we haven't really learned very much of why this works, why does it work to like stick some, a, a matrix next to another matrix and put it in RAF? And then you get something else, uh, there is like a deeper reason as to why that works, uh, and it's not too complicated. Um, but it would be good, I think it would, that would have been a worthwhile thing for them, for them to teach us, but.
I think we made a mistake with that sentence though, it's just we haven't really learned much, just end right here.
I just, just there, that's it, that's where we end, yeah, I guess, I guess.
This, this is the matrix of the transformation, that is, S A is another transformation.
Yeah, this is, this is the matrix representation of T, matrix representation of S A is this.
Is, uh, so means that when a vector is going through this transformation, is give you the inverse of T? Or your reply is going back again?
If you put a vector, if you put a vector into this, you're gonna, nothing's gonna happen.
It, it, it's go, it's giving you the same vector.
The same vector, that's what it means to get I D two out, right, cuz you put it, you have, you have to put a two by two vector in, cuz that's how T is defined. Right, and you're gonna get a two by two vector out, the same two by two vector out, or, uh.
How would you word that though, would you just say S A of T and then the function that decided equal back to that same function?
That's the exa, exactly what this is saying right here, that's what this is saying in this, in this thing right here.
Yeah, when you have a function, you decide it.
Well, you just put, you just put X and.
Yeah, then right here, it'll be X, yeah, okay.
But when they write it like this, they're literally just talking about the transformation itself, right, not applied to some X, although that's what you always do, they just talk about the transformation itself.
The transformation can be defined as a matrix.
Always, always can be defined as a matrix, yeah. Every, every, sorry, if it's linear, it can always be defined as a, as a matrix.
Have we dealt with anything nonlinear?
No.
Not now?
Cuz we're in linear algebra, right, so it's not gonna, you're not gonna do it.
Okay.
So it's uh. Okay, I better move, I better move on because, because uh, I wanna get to chapter seven today, and we only have forty minutes left, so. Unless there's any final questions about this, I'll move on, it's a, it's confusing one.
Nah, it's fine.
Like, this is worth it.
Yeah, I guess it was worth it, it was worth it, yeah, I'm, I'm happy we figured that out, I, I thought like, when I was looking at it by myself, just no clue, just no clue. Uh, but I guess we, we.
Yeah, I think that's a good hack to use in case uh, you get some question like that, and if they ask for some weird.
Just put it here, yeah, just talk about it here. So, uh, five point eight is the section that I don't understand very well, so I, hopefully, I'll try my best to help, and, but I'm, I'm. Also somewhat confused by stuff here, so, matrix of a transformation. Uh, of a linear transformation, uh, part two. Linear transformation part two. So, there's a few important things here, right, so, and it's, it's a lot to understand, that what, what we get, what we do here is really what's called the change of basis. Um, and that's a special kind of transformation that has a very. Um, and that's a special kind of transformation that has a very. Fine understanding, like a very fine, like a intuitive reasoning, but they don't get into any of that, and it's just some sort of no weird notation. That's what, that's what it seems like to me, to me at least, so, um, yeah. So, let's start off here, just get this right, yeah, that'd be. Okay, so first, we're gonna define this kind of transformation, it's called the coordinate vector of X with respect to B. So the coordinate vector of X with respect to V is equal to, pretty much, it's equal to. A, A one, A two, A three, dot dot dot, A N. Right? Which is a vector in R N, right? And those As represent. Uh, X as a linear combination, so let's say, let's say we have the set B here, B is our, B is a set. B is a basis for R N, okay? B is a basis for R N, so let's say it has, well, let's just say it has. V one, V one, V. Uh, I'm just gonna write it lower because I'm gonna go into the picture, so B is equal to. Um, V one, V two, dot dot dot, V N. Right? And so. Um, what we're pretty much saying is that X, the this coordinate thing is equal to the A values, where the A values come from this. X as a linear combination of the base, of the vectors in the basis. So A V one plus, uh, sorry, A one V one plus A two V two. Plus A three V three, dot dot dot, A N V N. Okay, so what this pretty much does is you input a vector and a base, right? You have to tell it what 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 basis, I guess, keep saying base today for some reason. You give it a vector and a basis, and what it spits out is it spits out the, the numbers of the linear combination. That give you that vector. Right? So if I had this vector, let's say I'm in R two, I'm using the standard basis, so this is, um, this is uh, zero, one, right? And this is one, zero, and let's say I have this vector like that, okay? So let's say that's X. So X can be written as two times this, right? So X is equal to two times one, zero. Plus one times zero, one. And so C sub B, where B is just our standard basis, right, which is one, zero. Zero, one, C sub B of X is equal to two, one. Okay, so it's a different kind of linear transformation that tells a good amount of information about the uh, about the vector. That you put into it, sorry, that's a X vector. So.
See, like the C of B is like the coefficients of each individual basis?
Coefficients in the linear combination of the basis B to get vector X, it's a lot to say, it's a lot to say. But it's, it's these number, it's these numbers.
Yeah, yeah, and that's because it's R two, right? Yeah, it's just continuing there. Yeah, okay.
B are unit vector?
They don't have to be, they don't have to be, no, they don't have to be, but they are in this case. They don't have to be at all, though, B can be any base of R N.
So linear independent?
Yes, linearly independent. So. Well, okay, let's go to the next part, and the next part is pretty much where I I start struggling to understand at least. So here we have, uh, T, um, is a transformation from R N. To R M, okay, it's linear, we have B one. Is equal to a basis for R N. Okay, it's a basis for R N, uh, B two is a basis. For R M, okay, make sure I got that right. Then, what they're saying is that then there exists. There exists a matrix. Called M B one, B two, or B two, B one, yeah, B two, B one. B two, B one, where. And this thing, C B two of T of X. Is equal to M B two, B one, time, uh, of. Of, it doesn't really matter, actually, what you call it, C B one, X. And I don't have much to say about that. Um, for all X E R.
This part I never understand, all this B do, B one.
X E R N, yeah. So, if I try to understand this, so what what's actually happening here for a second on the side? And how this is what's actually happening, I really, I don't really know, but, uh, one useful thing is to take this equation. One useful thing is to take this equation, C, um, B two, uh, uh, treat them like matrices, actually, treat them like matrices. T. Of X. Equals the matrix representation of M B two, B one. C B one.
That is the, what they call map?
They call what?
Map?
Map?
This is the map that they asking for, because during the webinar, they were saying map or something, uh.
This is a map, a map is just a special kind of transformation, um, you can think of it like, it's a map is like. It's just like, it's just like, i- it's the action of moving a point in R N, uh, to a point in R M. That's what it is, that's the, that's the mapping, mapping action, and so you'd say this is a map. Uh, how is it different than transformation? Probably in some way, I don't know how, so that's what a map. So one.
It's not connected to them, the.
No, it's, it's not connected to the M, I mean, it's a transformation, so it is a map, but not any differently than any other one.
Yeah, I think in today's, um, cl- um, session, he said, the map is just like same thing for transformation, he's like. Like, I pretty, I'm, I'm thinking it's the same thing, it's just like we're going to like.
So we actually don't need the Xs here, yeah, yeah, you're you're right, it is pretty much the same thing, right? So, we just want, if we just want the matrix representations here. Um, so, one useful thing to do, which I think makes more sense, is to say that the matrix representation of T, just T by itself. Is, imagine we're multiplying by C B two inverse, inverse on the left side, so it's gonna be the matrix representation of. C B two, um, inverse. M B two, B one. C B one. I'm sorry, not to the barrel, just, just that, and I think this is a little bit more of a useful form of that, and I I've made some progress trying to understand this. What is essentially happening here is this situation, okay? Um, I, one person here has a vector, uh, has a base for their vector system in R two that looks like this, it's just a standard basis. And they have a vector that looks like, maybe like, maybe like that, okay, this is the vector V. And they would describe this vector as, uh, I'd say one and a half, right? One and a half. Well, actually, sorry, how to, sorry, one and a half times one, zero. Right? Well, just to make it simpler, I'll make this a little longer, so it's, it's just two, so that's V, so. So two times one, zero, plus one times zero, one. And they wanna say, show this vector the same shape to someone else, but the problem is that they're also in R two. But their basis vectors look like this. Those basis vectors also span R two, but it's not true that it's the same linear combination, right here, right? It's not true, they wanna show, so we wanna show the same vector, this one here went that many places, so I'll just try to guess it, went like, kinda like that, I guess. So they wanna show this same vector. But we're using these bases, right? Using these bases, um, I guess, well, I don't know what to call them, but I'll just call them I hat and J hat. Okay? Or maybe I'll call them actually U one, U two, and instead of these being specific, I'll just say this is, this is a, call that X. Call that X, call this V one, V two. So essentially, what you have to do to apply. A to. Um, show this vector, to explain what this vector is here, is. Let me see, C B one. Yeah, first of all, get a vector that explains what the linear, what this is as a linear combination of these vectors. Right? That's exactly what C B one is, C B one is, right? C B one, and assuming, sorry, B one equals, right, equals V one. V one, V two, right, sorry, it's a V. And B two equals. Y, U one. Uh, U two. So first of all, get this into, what is the linear combination? So we said it was two, one, it could be anything, right? But let's just say it was two, one, in case we have that. Then transform. Yeah, okay, transform this vector. In, by, by knowing what the linear transformation is to get from this, these standard basis to this standard basis, right? To get from this standard basis to this, that's, that's the whole point, we're gonna transform the, those two green ones into these two orange ones. That matrix, we're gonna call the transformation two B two, two B two. From B one. We'll call it that. And then from there, figure out what this is, figure out what this is in terms of this guy's basis vectors. Well, that's exactly what it is, that's exactly what C B two is. Uh, oh, hold on, but it's already inter, but it's already in terms of him, it's already in terms of his numbers, so you have to do the inverse of it. Yeah. And that's pretty much where my understanding stops, so I can vaguely understand, so that's what, that's what we have here.
From what I understand, the matrix here is the. Is that transformation from two different coordinate?
Yeah, it's from two different coordinate systems, systems, yeah. This is the coordinate of B one, and this is the coord- coordinate system B two.
What exactly happened is what I'm trying to figure out, I, I don't get this.
We're, yeah, we're pretty much from, from this person's point of view, right? There's the, this B one point of view, we're trying to say, how can I explain what this red vector is? In terms of the basis of B two, in terms of a combination of U one and U two, right?
So we're looking for the same vector, but from a different, um, basis, basis?
That's exactly right, it has to be the same vector, the point is, that's the same vector, right? But from a perspective of a different base, because remember, for for this guy, for this guy over here, this is exactly, that red dot is zero, one. And this red dot is one, zero, even though that's not at all what it is for us. From his perspective, from the B two perspective, that's exactly what zero, that's, that's what defines zero, one and one, zero.
Okay, so it's technically the same as the, the green highlights, but we see differently, and we're trying to find how we view it.
Right? We're trying, yeah, one, zero, yeah, like that. Um, so that's like the, that's like the logic behind it, but I, I don't really, I don't understand much past that.
Now, how do we do it now?
So let's try, I mean, I can like, I can just compute an example, I don't really know what I'm doing, but I can just, I can just do it. So, um, one thing to note here, right from this, is that, um, oh, another way of rearranging this thing up here. This thing up here is, um, C, wait, T. How is that equal to T? Let me think for a second, T goes for R N, okay. Anyways, let's, let's just do an example and see what happens, so, another way to rearrange this equation up here, similar to how I rearrange this to this. I can rearrange this in a similar way to, um, M B two, B one equals. The matrix representation of C B two of T of V one. Um, uh, dot, 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 I guess it's just how he wrote it, C B two, T of V N. Okay? So. Um. Which, oh, yeah, yeah, that's, okay, so you could, you can compute it like that, or you can compute it like this. C B two composed with T composed with C B inverse, that's actually what I meant to write, sorry, that's what I meant to write. Just make these the same color. And so that's another way to calculate M B two, B one. So, uh, let's do an example with it, right? So let T. Uh, T, so this is our, this is where our example starts, T goes from R two to R two. Uh, B, T of X Y equals three X minus two Y. Five X. Plus Y. Okay, five X plus Y. So. Um, oh, and then, sorry, and then the, they gives us B one. Which, no, is a basis for R two, this is gonna be basis, I can read my writing, one, two, two, one. One, two, two, one. And B two is. One, one, negative, one, one. So, and the question asks us to find M B two, B one, M B two, B one. And M B one, B two.
Uh, wait, we're using this formula, right? The M B two, B one in the red?
Here, yeah.
Okay, yeah, and this is like in the textbook, right? The C B two of T of C B inverse?
Well, it's all from my notes from the lecture, it's as much as I, I don't, it must be in the textbook.
So, wait, there is, there's a difference, like which one are we doing for this question?
Both of them, we're doing, of these two?
Yeah.
Both of them, so if you reverse it, if it was M B one, B two, then this would be a B one here. And sorry, this should, this should have been a B two, but it would be a B one now.
M one, B one, this is BS.
This is a two, 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 so if you switch the position of these two, then you just switch this to a one, instead of a two.
Only, it was always the same.
Oh, sorry, no, 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 I messed up the formula a little bit, this is a B one, this is a B one here, sorry, this is a B one here, so then if you switch it, you switch those positions.
Yeah, okay, so it is C B one, B two inverse.
Yeah. So let's give it a try, so we're calculating this first, so I set up there, M B two, B one. Is equal to, well, the matrix representation of M B two, B one is equal to, uh, C. B two invert, oh, no, not inverse, C B two composed with T composed with C B one inverse. Okay, so this is equal to the matrix representation of C B two. Times the matrix representation of T, times the matrix representation. Of C B one inverse. How do I find the matrix representation of C B two?
How do we, what's the C B two again like? How do we, what's the C B two again like?
Uh, it's this, this. Oh, sorry, not that, no, it's this here. So C sub B of X is like the, it's the numbers in front of the linear combination, put in a vector.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Isn't that just the same vector? Yeah, that, that's just the same vector, isn't it?
Yeah, actually, we used class, we got a different formula for, um, M B two, B one.
What's the formula?
It's C B, it's C B two, um, T of V one, and then, and then C B two, T of V two, yeah, yes, that's, that's what we use.
Wait, that's an N or a two?
Where?
Practically, you need to, we need to, we have the transformation, we need to compose this with the vector, with the C B two that we have already in the, and, and so you find the coordinate. You make it like is a linear combination.
Uh, like for using this formula or using this formula?
Well, find the C B two, we need to put in a linear combination with the V, with the, with the T.
TV, yeah. What, how do you multiply? Or do we, is, is, was that the question?
Uh, I know how to do it, I have no idea how to explain it, so.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I can figure this out too, yeah, I mean, what I would do is to do C B two, is I would say the ma- the matrix representation of C B two is C B two of E one, and then C B two of E two, right? Is that what you were gonna say, or is there a different way that you're gonna go about it?
Uh, different way.
So what's the different?
Uh, the vector one of B one, you plug that into the, uh, T, or the transformation, and then you compute it that way.
Uh, yeah, using this, using this.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's just that we wouldn't know, oh, no, we actually could, we could do, yeah, yeah, that would work too, I think that's actually what the, no, that's not what the teacher did, but that's not what Horowitz did.
That's what I did in the tutorial.
Yeah, he did, Horowitz did it like this, so he said, well, C B one is just this, but isn't that just the vector? Isn't that just the same vector, C B two?
E one is the lambda, no? E one is the lambda, I don't know, why is that?
What's the lambda, what, what, what do you mean? Like, you're, are you thinking about eigenvectors?
Yeah, is it not that one?
Well, you're skipping a few chapters, we're not, we're not at eigenvectors yet, so maybe something looks like it, but yeah, we're not, we're not quite there yet, yeah.
Isn't C B two just the same vector?
Yeah, I'm trying to think that, isn't C B two just, the vector? Oh, no, 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 it's not, it's not just the vector, no, 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 it would be the vector if, yeah, yeah, okay, it would be the vector if this was the standard basis. If this was the standard basis, it's not the standard basis though, right? If that was the standard basis, then it would just be the vector, or, or just however you define, if, if like, we have a vector, like two, five, that's defined in, so this is just in R two, right? You assume that you're using the standard basis here when you say this, you say, you assume you mean two times E one, or two times one, zero, plus five times zero, one, you're, you're assuming that you're using the standard basis, but here we're saying it's a different basis, it's this basis. Right? So when I say C B two, C B two of E, I'm pretty much saying one, zero equals A times, uh, we're doing B two, B two is here, one, one, A times one, one, plus B times negative one, one. Right? Um, so, uh, then I would just try to solve this, I mean, can I just solve it by looking at it? Uh, negative one, no, I can't just solve it by looking at it, this would have to be negative. No, I, okay, well, let's just see, um, so this would be, uh, one, one, negative one, 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 zero. So row two minus row one, one, negative one, one, zero, one plus one is two, uh, zero, minus one is one, one, negative a half. Okay. So, um, is it, is it my headphones that are doing that, if it, maybe, or is there someone who has a, yeah, it might just be my headphones doing it, some sort of hissing sound. Oh, you hear a noise?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Then, um, I don't really know what to do, it's just, it, yeah, it's just there, um, so negative a half, uh, oh, and then I have to do R one plus R two, so one, zero, uh, oh, no. One half, zero, one, one half, okay. So the linear combination is one half, one half, so this is gonna be, uh, the matrix representation of C B two is gonna be, so, one half, one half, and then I gotta figure out C B two, B two, there you go, stop now, uh, E two. So it's pretty much saying zero, one equals A times, uh, B two, wait. Yeah, B two, same B two from before, so it's gonna be one, one.
Oh, why are we using the E in this?
Because that's how you, that's how you find the matrix representation of, of a transformation, you apply it to the standard basis. That's one way, one way to find it, it's just apply it to the standard, it's just apply it to the standard basis. Right? So, oh, someone's at the door, hold on one second, sorry.
Where did you get the one, one from in front of A? Anyone?
Okay, I'm back.
It's from B two.
It was given in the question.
Yeah, it was given, it was given in the question, B, uh, oops, B two is the set one, one, negative, one, one. So I'm trying to find the basis vector as a linear combination of that.
Gosh, okay.
So then, uh, this is one, one, negative, one, one, zero, one, so, row two minus row one, one minus one, zero, zero, um, one plus one is two, zero minus, uh, one minus zero is one, this is, uh, one and a half. I went to row one plus row two, one, zero, a half, zero, one, half? That doesn't make sense.
How do, how do we just all of a sudden start putting back, um, constants on the, like, A slash B?
Where, where do we put constants, what was it?
Oh, we've been like reducing without like the whole idea of the actual values, just assumed to be like zero, but now we just equated it back to zero, one, to find the.
To this, well, this is just a system, this is just a system now, like, we're just solving for A and B here, so to solve for A and B, you put this in a, in a system, right, to solve for, we're essentially, what this is saying is zero equals A minus B, uh, one equals A plus B.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
And that's, that's just a system of equations, so I can just solve it like this.
Yeah.
But it doesn't make sense that I got the same answers. How can both those vectors be the same vector?
Are you supposed to reduce it?
Well, to solve, yeah, to solve for, uh, to solve for the answer, you'd have to. I must have made a mistake, let's see. One, one, negative one, one, zero, one, row two minus row one, so one minus one is zero, one plus one is two, one minus zero is one, two, one, divided by two is one, one half. And add these rows. Looks like to me.
How did you get the fraction?
Yeah, um, for the, uh, so for C B two, E one, it's one half and negative one half, and C B, E two is one half and one half, so they're not the same, they're different.
So I made a mistake in the first one, not this one.
Yeah, at least that's what I'm getting, I'm getting, um,
Yeah, I probably just made a mistake.
One half, negative.
Your second one, right, probably something on this side.
Yeah, so, uh, row two minus row one is, this is one minus one is zero.
Cause you got it, it's just at the end, you didn't put the negative. You haven't like, you know.
Oh, I do have, I do have the negative there, you're right.
You have, but you just didn't write it down.
Didn't write it, there we go. Okay, so that's one of the matrices, so that was just one of them, right? T is not too hard to find, we got, we were given T, uh, here is T. So T is three, negative two, five, one, okay, that equals the matrix representation of T. And then C B inverse, well, you just, we find the matrix representation of C B one and take the inverse of it. So, matrix representation of C B one is, uh, uh, is gonna be, C B one of E one, C B one of E two. So, um, uh, we have, we have, uh, okay, so C B one of E one, so E one is that, and we want that to be a linear combination of, of B one, which is one, two, two, one. Again, can I just look at this and figure it out? Uh, I have, zero.
Gosh, so lost on this one.
Well, I'm not very good at figuring it out just from looking at it, so, okay, I'm gonna squish it in here, two, one, uh, one, zero.
You two, right? So shouldn't that be one?
First, I did you want.
Yeah, shouldn't that just be like the zero, one, zero thing?
This here?
Yeah.
The thing is, is that we're finding it, we're, we're, we're applying it to E one, that's where the E one comes here, right? But we're looking at it as a linear combination of the bases in B one. The vectors in B one, which is a base, basis. B, B one is one, two, two, one.
So we're doing the C of B one, but then E one of all of that.
See, it's not C of B one, C B one is the transformation, you apply that to E one.
Yeah.
C B one, it's pretty much saying, what are these A and B values? What are these A and B values? That will be your X and Y values for the, for the vector. Okay, and these vectors come from B one. These vectors here come from B one. Cat's trying to get in the bed. Okay, um, so I'll solve this, so this is, uh, row two minus, um, two, row one, so one, two, uh, one, zero, one minus four, um, zero minus two. One minus four is right, yeah. Um, and I'll just put that there, I'll divide this by three, so it'll be one, two thirds, and then row one minus two, row two, one, zero, one, minus four thirds is negative a third, one minus four thirds is negative a third. Zero, one, two thirds. Okay, so I'm really squishing everything together here, but that's for that. So let me just highlight what we know, so we know, we know T, we know, we know C B one. Okay, we're finding C B two now, that's what we're looking for, we started here with this, so we know the first column of C B two, sorry, C B one, the first column of C B one is negative a third, two thirds. Okay, and then the next column, I guess I'll do down here, so it's gonna be for the other basis vector, as a linear combination of two, one. Let me make sure that's right. One, two. One, two, wouldn't really, actually, it wouldn't matter, plus B times two, one. So this is gonna be one, two, two, one, oh, one. Right? And so then we'll find row two minus two, row one, one, two, zero, zero. Um, it's the same thing as before, so one minus four is negative three, negative two, this is going to be one, uh, two thirds. No, that's not the same, hold on. Wait, what did I do up here? Yeah, 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 hold on, this is not the same. Row two, one minus zero is still one. Okay, there's the difference, and so this is negative three, so then this is one, and this is negative a third. Row one minus two, row two, one, zero, zero minus two, row two is just two thirds, zero, one, negative a third, okay, so we have that, um, C B one is gonna be, these are the next columns, two thirds, negative a third. Right, two thirds, negative a third, okay, we have all our matrices now, we need the inverse of this one, that's okay, so let's get it all together, C B two is this, one half, it's all one half, so one half, negative one half, one half, one half, okay. T was this, three, five, negative two, one. Okay, and then we just need the inverse of this matrix, so we need negative a third, two thirds, I should remember more than one at a time, shouldn't I, uh, two thirds, negative a third. We need the inverse of that, I gotta kick, kick the cat out, cause she's chewing things.
Cast like what the episode was.
Yeah, okay. So, so, um, uh, I need the inverse of this now, so to find the inverse of this is not very hard, right? So we do one over the determinant of this, so this times this is one ninth, minus this times this is four ninths. Right, times the other stuff. Three, negative two, five, one, and then this one is the adjugate, right, so negative a third, negative a third, negative two thirds, negative two thirds. Okay, and that will be equal, if I just simplify this beginning, but one third, one ninth minus four ninths is, uh, negative three ninths, which is, um, negative a third, which is negative three. Um, so, yeah, so now I just multiply these, actually, these matrices together. Um, what, can I just use a calculator, is that okay with everybody, that I just use a calculator?
I think you should.
Yes, I would just use a calculator, cause I don't want to do that, so, matrix calculator. Um, can't see where to grab the screen, cause the sticky note's in the way, okay, um, so, uh, no, remove, 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 so I'm gonna multiply these two first, okay, so, three, five, negative two, one, negative a third, negative two thirds, negative two thirds, negative a third. Okay, so multiply, so I got, wow, okay, not a very nice thing, but I got, a third, negative four thirds, negative seven thirds, negative eleven thirds. It is good that it's still in terms of thirds though, right? Because we're multiplying by three in the front there, a half, a half, negative a half, a half, negative three. Okay, now I'm gonna multiply this, insert in A, insert in B. Yeah, and this is a half, a half, negative a half, a half. Okay, so I got negative three times negative one, negative five halves, negative four thirds, negative seven sixths, okay, and so our final answer is three, um, uh, fifteen over two, I guess, fifteen over two, four.
Oh, yeah, no, wait.
Yeah, and, uh, Yeah, and uh positive three times two, seven over two. That's my answer, let's see if that matches, have a feeling. That it won't match the answer, but let's see, so that's M.
Right.
Uh, yeah, it is right, wow, okay, there we go, so that's MB two B one. MB two B.
Uh, I'm confused, how did you get the, the inverse? Did you just take the determinant, that was it, I, I don't.
So yeah, so the, the formula for the inverse of a two by two matrix, right?
Hmm.
So if I have A equals A, B, C, D. Then A inverse is going to be one over the determinant of A. Times um uh D, A, negative B, negative C. Which is the adjugate.
Alright.
It's just, it's just simple enough in two by two to just memorize. Right?
Okay.
So that's all I did. Notice I switched these, they're, they're the same though, so it doesn't matter, and I made these negative. And then in the front, I did one over the determinant, which was negative three.
This was just part one.
Yeah, this was just part A. And then someone, sorry, someone, someone asked there, can I, something?
Summarize like the steps you did for this.
Hmm, so um essentially, I just plugged everything into this formula. I don't actually really understand what I'm doing at all, I just plugged everything into this formula, right, so it's, it's just. MB two B one is equal to CB two composed with T composed with CB one inverse. So I just did part by part, finding each of these matrices, so the matrix representation of CB two is. CB two applied to E one, CB two, CB two applied to E two. Right, so I did that. Uh, remember CB two is the transformation that gives you the vector, which is these A and B values in the linear combination. Right?
Yeah.
You use the other equations a lot faster.
Uh, yeah, it seems like it, it does seem like it, because uh you'd just be doing. You'd be doing a lot of calculations too, but since we're in R two, it would, wouldn't be too bad, I guess. Yeah, I actually.
That's the part. That's the part I don't get though, with the CB then of E and then the actual values, the coefficients of A and. Or I'm sorry, the A and B, I don't get it.
B, well, that's the definition of this, of this transformation, CB two, right?
Yeah.
It's, it's this, right, so CB, C, C sub B of X is this vector, A one, A two, A two, A three, A N. Right? Such that.
Yeah.
A, A, uh, it's our, in R N, and uh B is a basis for R N, right? And the A's, they just come from, yeah, X is a linear combination of that basis, of those basis vectors. So what exact linear combination is it, what are the values of these A's, that's what goes in here.
Oh, okay.
Right, that's all it's saying. And so um with this, we just do that to the basis vectors, the thing is, is that. You gotta watch out, is that the, the base you choose is important, so here it says B two, right? B two, we're looking for, what is E one as a linear combination of the bases in this basis? B two.
So you, so you, so where did the, and this, the one and the negative one are ones that we were given, and so it equated to one, zero?
Because that's what E one is, E one is one, zero.
And did you solve for E two on the, this is on this right side here?
Yeah, sorry, it is, it is very messy, but yeah, this is where I did E two, yeah, this is where I did E two.
And then you just like reduced. And then that's, what are we looking for, we use the half and the negative a half, where do we use that?
So look, here, I put in, I put in the matrix, CB, CB two is equal to this, which is equal to this. Is one half, negative a half, from here, one half, negative a half. One half, one half, from here.
From here, but that's just, isn't that just CB two? And isn't this CB two and CB one?
Uh, no, this is just CB two. CB one is the whole other thing we do at the end. Right? That was just CB, CB two.
You have to do the same thing over for CB one now.
Yeah, yeah.
You flip the positions of B two and B one now? That you're doing at the other.
Uh, sure, I probably, I'm not gonna do the whole calculation for it though, if that's okay, like.
No, just, just like in generic, so you.
Yeah, yeah.
Makes it.
So M, uh, first I'll just write MB two B one. Was equal to.
Isn't that?
Representation of CB two composed with T composed with CB one inverse, like that. Right? Um, and then uh here, uh, M. B one, B two is gonna be CB one composed with T composed with CB two inverse.
Hmm.
You just switch them around.
So what was the other way someone was just mentioning with the V?
So, that's this formula up here, that I wrote here in, in green here. MB two B one is also equal to just CB two evaluated at T of V one. Where V one is a basis, is a base, is part of the basis for B one. B one, oops, it's the wrong color. Part of the basis for B one, see, it's, it's the Vs for B, right? And so you, pretty much, you take every vector in the basis for B one. Right? Um, evaluated at T and then evaluate that at CB two. And those are the columns, those are the columns of your matrix representation of M two B, MB two B one.
Yeah, when, just to be clear though, when you say evaluates that CB two, now we'd equate what we just got from the transformation of V one. Equated to the, the CB two values, right? And then we do the whole.
You do V one, you evaluate at T, right? And that, that number, you do, whatever that is, you got A and B out of that. Yeah, then you do, well, sorry, you shouldn't call it A and B, I'll, I'll call it X and Y out of that, right? X and Y is equal to some linear combination, A. Plus B times the bases in B two, in this case, that's.
Yeah.
U one, U two.
Yeah.
And then that A and B value is the column.
Okay, but what about this, what about the V N, what's that?
That's just going up to V N, right, so how many, how much stuff you, you got, right, so technically this should be, this should just be, uh, this should be. Uh, V one, V two, uh, dot, 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 V N. Right, and this should also be.
Yeah, right, so.
Would you say, sorry?
How far? That's a general formula, how far did the actual question go up to, and if, let's say we had.
Just two.
So we'd also use, okay.
So you only, you only have two spots.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, can you, can I see the step again, the M, when you find M two, M, uh, M two, one?
Here, here, yeah, I just, I just didn't write M, MB two B one equals that.
So how do you find the middle one, uh, three minus two, five?
That's, that, that's just the matrix representation of T, so we go back up to the question, and they said T looks like this.
Okay, so you just, you just put in.
Matrix form, just put in a matrix form, three, five, negative two, one.
Uh, can you go down to the answer, I don't think I got the right answer, I just.
Uh, there's the answer.
Okay.
But you're also solving. Uh, cool.
Well, you gotta multiply all the stuff at the end.
I got five, seven, okay, this is by row, five, seventeen over two, four, seven over two, am I wrong?
Oh, well, yeah, those are, those are different numbers, but maybe you're just off by.
Yeah, like the, the four and the seven over two is right, the top.
Probably been a mistake at the.
Yeah, I don't know, did you multiply by hand or did you multiply with a calculator?
Multiply by hand.
Then maybe there, that's where I would make a mistake, so.
Because what I did was, um, I first, you know, the half, the half stuff? And the three negative two, five, one, I multiplied that together first. And then I.
Shouldn't make a difference.
I know it shouldn't make a difference, but it's giving me a different number.
Hmm, hmm, yeah, I understand it is, um. Uh, most likely, it's, it's, you just made a mistake somewhere, that's probably like, that's probably what it is, you just made a small mistake.
Yeah.
And uh, yeah, there shouldn't be something.
It's almost there.
Yeah, right.
Yo, could you go back to the C, the T of V one, V two, or V N, whatever?
Uh, here.
Yeah, so is it, uh, if it's like V one, you just use the first, uh, like. What is V one exactly?
V one is one of the bases in B one, in B one.
So it would literally be a, it would be like a victor, vector, and they would give us, that, something has to be given though.
Yeah, 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 something has to be given, you have to be given both bases, you have to be given B one and B two. B one and B, B one and B two, right, you have to be given both of those.
And then we just use a, the um corresponding like span, it's well, not just span, but like the corresponding basis like V one. And then we just use it into this new formula here.
Hmm, you call, you call V one, the first vector from B one. Right, the first vector.
Yeah.
And V two is the first vector, is the second vector from B one, and V three is the third vector from B one. And yeah.
Uh, so even though, so if this was reversed though, and it would be, so it'd be CB one, right? Would we be using?
Well.
The ones?
Just think about it like this, if you reverse it, that's literally the, the exact same thing, if I just reverse this, calling this, calling this one. Calling this one and this one two, that's the exact same thing as if I just left it and I just changed the names here. Called that one two, called that one one. If that's easier to do, you might just do that, 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 just, just. Right?
Probably.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, it does.
Just, just change the names and then leave the formula, and it's the same thing.
Yeah. Thanks. Is this five point eight, right?
This is five point eight, yeah.
Oof, okay.
So, yeah, so this is, let's, I wanted, I know it's already past eight, I, I think I'll go for another fifteen minutes. And I think I'll just talk about eigenvectors quickly, okay, we'll start seven point one, I know we didn't do five point nine, I think maybe we'll do that tomorrow. Okay, tomorrow during the session, if that's okay with everybody, because I think it's more important that we get to eigenvectors. What time, tomorrow?
Uh.
Uh, ten, I'm pretty sure, let me look at the thing and just make sure what I said, uh, just I don't give you the wrong information, but. Uh, um, Tuesday at ten AM, yeah, ten AM tomorrow. Okay, so ten AM tomorrow, I'll finish five point nine and I'll do whatever we don't finish, so abstract vector spaces and stuff like that, but we will start. Eigenvalues now, okay, so we'll get to, we'll get to that, just at least for fifteen, fifteen minutes, do that. Um.
Well, the, the, the five day are you using, are you posting somewhere or?
Yeah, I posted in my tutor announcements chat on the server, tutor announcements, at the top of the, uh, third, third thing from the top of the server. If you go into the chats, third thing from the top is tutor announcements, I post the video links there and I post the, the documents there.
Okay, thank you.
Nope, so let's start with, let's take a look at seven point one, so what's seven point one asking, right? So. Uh, this is eigenvalues. And eigenvectors. Okay, uh, and I will just open to the thing here. Five point nine is pretty short too and not important, really, I don't think, I, 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 I highly, highly doubt they would put it on the test because it's, it's actually. Barely anything, really, you just have to know how to do one thing, and then, once you know how to do it, it's like, it's the same thing. I think so at least. So, um, seven point one is eigenvalues, what, what that pretty much is, is that sometimes after a transformation, right? T of X, after a transformation, you end up just getting a scaled version of that vector, right? And this will only happen for a specific set of vectors, those are called the eigenvectors. And the amount that they're scaled is called the eigenvalues. Right, I think a good way to do is, again, I'm gonna quickly look at, look for a three blue, one brown video, because I think the, the visual is, is important here. Uh, let me, well, I'll put it here for a second then. Um. Three blue, one brown, linear algebra.
So many terms in linear.
So many times what?
So many terms.
Oh, yes, yes, a lot of terms, so eigenvalues are here and I will just find the part where he shows it. Yeah, here. Here, so what about, is this? I just wanna see it actually do it. Can I see the actual animation though, I wanna see the animation, okay, well, there you go, that's the animation. So that blue line of that, I mean, that yellow line of vectors, I wish it did a longer thing. Right, so you see, the green and the yellow vectors in this, after this transformation are not rotated. They're just, they're only stretched, so you see, this is before the transformation, it's telling you it's gonna be stretched by three, stretched by two. And so notice that purple vector is not an eigenvector and it's gonna get rotated. But those, the yellow and the green vectors, those are eigenvectors, because they only get stretched and not rotated by the transformation. Okay, so did that, was that a good visual? Uh, it works also in, uh. Just find it quickly. Oh, that's determinant. Any other good visual? Looks like pretty much the same thing, actually, exactly the same thing, okay, anyways, so there you go, that's that, I think that's pretty useful to, to see. Um, so the vectors that do this are called eigenvectors, how much they're stretched by is called eigenvalues. That's, that's the, the biggest part of it, right? Um, uh, understanding that now, how to actually compute these things is not crazy, not, 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 not a crazy thing to do. They're not that bad, so one thing to notice is um, is I can rearrange this, I can rearrange this, I can say T. Uh, first of all, T of X is, is represented by A of X, where A is some matrix, the matrix representation of T. Right, so the matrix representation of T is A. So AX equals lambda X. Okay, then I can say, well, AX is gonna be equal to um, uh. Lambda times the identity matrix times X, it's the exact same thing, right? This doesn't change anything, multiplying by the identity matrix doesn't change a vector at all. Right, the correct size of identity matrix. Then I can move everything to a side, right, so it's gonna be AX minus lambda I. X. Equals zero. Right, and then I want to, um, I wanna factor out an X, so it's gonna be A minus lambda I. X equals zero. Um. Oh, yeah. So, um, we know, and so, so what you see here is we're, we're seeing that some scale, some matrix is transforming X into the zero vector. Right, some matrix is transforming X into the zero vector, since we know that X does not equal zero, right? And that's an important thing, X does not equal zero, we know that just because we're saying that, we say that X can't be zero, that means this must be equal to zero. And if a transformation is the zero transformation, that means it must have a determinant of zero. So I, I haven't really talked about determinants in like a, the way that I like explained it that much, but if you're crushing down space into nothing, into zero. You must have a determinant of zero, that's what it means to have a determinant of zero, so the determinant of this, right, the determinant. Of A minus lambda I must be zero. Again, since we know this isn't zero, this must be equal to zero, right? But it's not just this, this is the determinant of this transformation, because that's what it means to, to, to crush space into zero, into nothing, right? If a transformation is the zero transformation, it has a determinant of zero. So this is how we actually solve for eigenvalues and eigenvectors. So given some matrix A, I just subtract lambda from each of the diagonal columns, right, that's what the, the number, the I is one, 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 zero, 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 zero. But stretched out for any R N. And so. I just use this to solve for my eigenvectors and eigenvalues. Um, this is, this is called the characteristic polynomial of A. Of lambda. So let's actually, just do an example, uh, finding eigenvalues. Oh, yeah, the multiplicity is, well, we'll get to that in a second. We'll get to that, and we probably won't talk about diagonalization today, but we'll, at least we'll do some examples of finding eigenvectors, or you know what? I don't wanna rush it too much, yeah?
See, the, the A minus the lambda of the identity matrix.
Yeah.
I've been doing other ways, I think it's the same.
Let me show you why it's the same, A minus lambda I.
Yeah.
X equals zero, I'll factor out a negative out of this, negative would be lambda I. I minus AX equals zero, divide both sides by negative one. Lambda I minus AX equals zero. So they're the same thing. I would recommend. Doing this. Um doing this way, but it again, it's the same thing, so if you're used to it one way, just stick to the one way, but. I I find this one easier. Because you're not taking a negative of this, you're just, you're just taking this matrix and just subtracting lambda from each column. But again, it's it's completely up, it's up to you. So uh let's do an example of finding the eigenvalues. Maybe let's do a bigger one. Yeah, let's do a bigger one, so. I'll start with this example, A equals this matrix. So negative two, one, negative one, negative eight, four, negative two, negative four, one, one. So if I wanna find the eigenvalues, right, the values by which the eigenvectors are scaled, I'm gonna put into this equation. Right? Um into this equation, sorry, the determinant equation, right? So um the determinant of. This minus lambda I, right, so just imagine you're subtracting lambda times I from this. Right, one, zero, 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 one, zero, 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 one. Okay, I multiply that lambda in, so it's just a lambda on each column, right? And all this is gonna be, is it's just, you're just gonna take, be taking away a lambda from each diagonal, so it's negative two minus lambda. One minus one, negative eight, four minus lambda. Negative two, negative four, one, one minus lambda. And we're just taking the determinant of this equal to zero. Oh, we have an equation with one uh one unknown, we can just solve for lambda now, right? We can just take the determinant and solve for lambda. You are allowed to do row and column operations here. Um and I will not do that. Oh no, I will do that, because Horowitz did it here and so I will. So uh I will do. Uh row two minus two, row three. Minus two, row three, yeah. So what we're left with, and I don't know this that well, I'm just looking at the thing, so it's two minus lambda. One minus one. Zero, two minus lambda. Negative four plus two lambda. Negative four, one, one minus lambda. The determinant of that equal to zero.
Do you have to do them?
No, you don't, you don't have to do that, you don't have to do it wrong, just makes it easier because you get a zero.
Or you just try to reduce it so that you can just like multiply from this column and you'd have one instead of working with three.
I have, yeah, I have a zero there, right? That's what I did, right, so I have a zero there, and so now I can take a determinant easier, and in fact. Uh this is. That doesn't make sense, I'm just, I'm looking at what he did here too, what is, okay.
Take the determinant from the line.
Yeah, I'll just take the term in here, he did another step, but I don't actually understand how it worked, so. Which is strange, to understand something that's. Like from a few chapters ago, but I mean, it's it's of course it happens, so. Um let's just negative two minus lambda. Times the determinant of that, so that's gonna be two minus lambda, sorry, two minus lambda. Times one minus lambda minus. Negative four plus two lambda. And then uh well, I need to do um. Minus, do it here, minus four. Times one, well, I don't have to do the one, so negative four plus two lambda. Plus two minus lambda. And that equals zero. So negative two minus lambda. E uh so that's. Two minus two lambda. Minus lambda. Uh plus lambda squared. Plus four minus two lambda. Minus four times, so that's negative four and two, so negative, well, I'll do the lambdas first, so two. Minus one is lambda, negative four plus two is negative two. Negative two minus lambda. Yeah, so this is gonna be lambda squared, and then the lambdas we have negative four, negative five, so negative five lambda. And then four and two, so plus six minus four lambda, my uh plus eight. Okay, so negative two lambda squared um plus ten lambda. Uh minus twelve minus lambda cubed. Cubed. Plus five lamp- lambda squared. Minus six lambda minus four lambda plus eight equals zero. So negative lambda cubed, uh my squares are here, here, that's it. So negative two and five, so plus three lambda squared. Um these guys are one, two, three, so ten. Minus six minus four, that's just zero, so no, no lambda, and then uh eight. Negative twelve plus eight, that's negative four. Sorry, guys, one second, my phone's ringing, I'm not gonna answer just yet, but uh I can't hear if someone's talking, one second. So um. Uh well, assuming I did everything right. Let's see, two minus X, X squared, two. Well, I don't know if I did everything right, yeah, I guess it looks like I did everything right, two times. Yeah, um the solutions to this are uh lambda equals negative one. Lambda equals two, lam- uh lambda, so. The solutions to this are um. Uh it's gonna be. Lambda plus one, lambda minus two squared equals zero, I factors into that. Okay? Um and so from this, right, you can see that the solutions are lambda equals negative one. Lambda equals two and two again. It is not that, I mean, obviously doesn't even really mean anything to to say two twice, but. Uh it is important because you can say that this has an algebraic. Multiplicity. Of two. Cause it appears twice, this has a multiple, multi- algebraic multiplicity of one, this one here. So. And that's important when we get into diagonalization, which is I guess tomorrow morning stuff, right? But these are the eigen, uh these are the eigenvalues, so there are two sets of vectors. One set gets stretched by negative one after the transformation and one set gets sec- gets stretched by two after the transformation. What are those actual sets? Well, we go back to our, we go back to our thing over here, we go back to this over here and we actually plug that in, so. Two, negative two, actually, I'll I'll just copy this. Alright, I'll just copy this down. And we actually plug the values in for lambda, so let's start with negative one. Negative one, so it's gonna be negative two plus one. One minus one, zero, two plus one, negative two plus two times negative uh times negative one. Negative four, one, one plus one. Right? We put that into a, put that into a. Matrix.
Negative four, I think. Third column?
We put that into a homogeneous system and we just solve, right? Oh, oh, that's a two, not a lambda, sorry, that's a two there. So it's gonna be uh negative one, one, negative one, zero, three. So it's negative four minus two, negative six, negative four, one, two. Put that in a homogeneous system and solve. The null space of this, right, the null space, which is, which is what it is when you put it in a homogeneous system and solve. Is gonna be the space, the subspace where the eigenvalues are, the eigenvectors are, sorry, where the eigenvectors are. Right? So I'll multiply this one by negative one. Uh and I'll do row, uh yeah, whatever, I'll do row three, well, can I just look from here? Yes, I can. Oh, sorry, uh we can't use this one, sorry, we can't use this one, because this was transformed, we have to use the original one. We have to use the original, so sorry, I made mistake. Um I don't know for sure if it works, so. I'll just go with this. And it seems to me like it wouldn't work, actually.
No, you don't, you don't put it into the RREF form, you put it back into the original one, and then you find that eigenvectors. At least that's like um.
Yeah, so you don't put it in the in the rearranged one, like in the where you're, to to find the determinant, we kind of rearranged it to help solve the determinant.
Equals a zero. That will equal to zero, cause now we have the A minus lambda I, if you were any of them, it just can equal to zero. So you have to put into the.
Yeah, so you have to, you have to put in this one, you have to put in this.
Yeah, you put into the other uh. What's it called, the RREF form or?
This isn't really RREF, but yeah, just rearrange, just like move, move slightly. Yeah, so I'll put it in here instead, so negative one, so it's gonna be, I'll do it right away, so it's negative two plus one is negative one. One, negative one, negative eight, negative four plus one is five. Negative two, negative four, one, one plus one is two.
Wait, what was the difference? What did he use in the first one that you're changing now?
Uh I'm, I use this, this matrix here, this matrix instead of this matrix. So this, the green one that's highlighted, is rearranged slightly, I did R two minus two R three on that one.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So you can't use that, you gotta use the actual original one from the question.
Can I see the solution, so I can see if I do, I did it right?
This here? This or, so what do you mean or?
That that's one.
I kind of skipped the actual factoring part. How you do that is is, there's lots of ways to do that, right, so.
Is it two and negative, or just two and two?
It's just two and two, this is just two s- said twice, I did it, I wrote it because I wanna show that it has a algebraic, algebraic multiplicity of two. It's just two twice, same number. This is negative one. So then this in RREF. Is, I'll do it in a different color, is thankfully I have it here, so that's one, zero, negative one, zero, one. Negative two, zero, zero, zero. And notice we have a null space, right, we have a null space, that null space is what we're gonna call the eigenspace. Okay, the eigenspace, and it's written like this, eigenspace of lambda one. Right, so we call this one. We call this lambda one, lambda two.
Eigen is a person?
Is it a person? No, it's not actually a person, it's a, it's a German word, a German word, that means um, it means like uh. I think it means if, well, I forgot now actually, but it means like something like. Part of, or something like that, or like a important part of.
So is eigenspace, okay, okay.
So it's eigenspace, yeah, right, so this is, this is your eigenspace, and it's gonna be the null space of this. Uh matrix here. Right, so the null space of this matrix is gonna be one, two, one. Right? And so the eigenspace is gonna be the span of that.
Where did you get one, two, one?
So I got that from this, so I said Z equals T, right, so X equals. T. Y equals two T, Z equals T. One, two.
This is like the Trivels trivial solution, right?
Well, i- it's the, it's the, well, the trivial solution would be X equals zero, Y equals zero, T equals zero. This is like, this is just showing that we have infinite solutions, and so it's that whole space, it's a whole like area. A whole like subspace of R three that we're in, right? That is being, being stretched by lambda one.
And would Z be the free variable?
I said T, but yeah. I use T, but yeah, it would see, yeah, whatever you want. So this is our first eigenspace, any vector is, any vector in this span is an eigenvector. That's being stretched by lambda one. Okay, sim- similarly, if we do the same thing for our lambda twos, which is just the number two. Uh we put that into our matrix, right, this matrix here, right, so it would be negative two minus two, so negative, negative four. Um one, negative one, negative eight, one, negative one, negative eight. Four minus two is two. Uh negative two. Negative four, one, one minus two is minus one, okay? And so again, we put this in RREF. We put this in RREF and it's gonna look like this, one. Negative a quarter. A quarter, zero, 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 zero. So in this case, our null space is gonna be two dimensional. Because we have two free variables, right, Y equals T, Z equals R. So X is equal to one quarter T negative a quarter R. Uh yeah, that's right. Uh Y equals T, Z equals R, so our null space is gonna be a quarter. One, zero. Right? Um and then negative a quarter, zero, one. And the span of these vectors is equal to. Running out of space, but it's equal to E lambda two. Right? Any vector in that span is gonna be stretched by lambda two. Yeah, what'd you say?
Wouldn't it just be E two and not E lambda two, like isn't it, isn't the general formula E lambda where?
I guess so, yeah, you're right, I guess that's, that's true. It it doesn't actually make a difference because I just said lambda two is equal to two, so I'm.
Yeah, next thing, um yeah, the algebraic multiplicity, like what actual. Significance does it like play apart from just saying it a quarter twice?
Well, uh notice, lambda one had an algebraic multiplicity of one. The eigenspace, the eigenspace was one dimensional. Lambda two, lambda two, now, I'm I'm kind of misleading you here, cause it's not exactly true, but lambda two had. Uh two has an algebraic multiplicity of two, and it had two um vectors in its span, right? That's not always true, that's not always true.
But it just had the multiplicity rather than the actual value.
Right, this is called the, this is called the geometric. Geometric multiplicity. And it doesn't have to equal the algebraic multiplicity. Okay, but the reason we keep track of both of those things is because if they're equal. For all eigenvalues, if they're equal for all eigenvalues in the, in the, in the matrix, then you can do diagonalization, which is seven point two. Then you can do diagonalization.
Oh, which is what we're like doing tomorrow, right?
Which is what we're doing tomorrow morning. If that's true, if the, if the algebraic multiplicity and the geometric multiplicity match up for all eigenvalues, then you can do diagonalization.
Yeah, okay.
Right? Lot of words, lot of words.
Wait, could you, could you repeat that for like the diagonalization? Like, I, it was like confusing for me. When it was diagonalized and stuff.
So the 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 real main thing is that, so look at all your eigenvalues, right, eigenvalues. And then look at the corresponding eigenspaces, so for for eigen, for lambda one. It has a multiplicity, an algebraic multiplicity of one, right? And then we look at our. Eigenspace and it has one vector in its span, it's one dimensional. Si- and that's called the, and that's called the geometric multiplicity. Right? If those match up for this one, good, let's check the next one, let's check the next one, so the next one is lambda two, it has an algebraic multiplicity of two. Let's check the eigenspace relating to it, well, it has a dimension of two, has two dimensions. Since the geometric and the algebraic multiplicity match up for all of them, for all the lambdas, so for lambda two it matched up. And for lambda one it matched up, that means it's diagonalizable. Diagonalizable, um.
One lambda 2 again?
Uh, let me just type this in and answer after, right? If, if, if and only, if and only if, uh, the geometric multiplicity and the algebraic multiplicity are equal for all for all eigenvalues. Okay, yes. Someone asked a question.
Lambda 2?
Where did it come from? Or what's the, what's the?
Or like, I just honestly it right now?
Lambda 2, I got it from here.
So it's 2 and 2?
Well, it's just 2, but I wrote it twice because, because notice, notice it shows up twice in the roots here, right?
Oh.
Right? It shows up, it shows up twice.
Instead of writing 2 plus minus 2, you just write 2 twice?
Well, this is, this isn't plus minus 2. The only solution to this is, is 2. Right? The only solution to this is 2. Minus 2 wouldn't be a solution. But the reason I wrote it twice is because it, it shows up twice as a root. Right?
Okay.
Shows up twice as a root. Here it shows up once as a root, right?
Okay.
And so that means it has an algebraic multiplicity of 2, right? And then I checked the eigenspace relating to it. I checked the eigenspace relating to it, which is E, E sub, uh, E sub lambda 2, and it has a dimension of 2.
Okay.
Which is the geometric multiplicity.
Uh, can you go up?
Yeah, yeah, no, no, let me know, yeah.
Uh, lambda negative 1, the answer for that?
The eigenspace?
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Yeah, you see it here? Do you want me to explain it or just, just you want to see it?
No, I just want to see.
Okay.
Uh, can I see, uh, the, the, the procedure on, after finding lambda 1 in the beginning?
And lambda 2, and like, we found lambda 1, lambda 2 at the same time.
So you only, uh, put back in the lambda on the, on the one that you did before, and you just you resolve with the lambda that you, we have, okay?
Yeah, so we choose, okay, let's say we're starting with lambda 1. I go back up to the original matrix with the lambdas in there, and I put that lambda in, I put that lambda in, right? So I took this, I put the lambda in, and I ended up with once this here, this matrix here, right?
Yeah.
And then I, oh, no, sorry, that's not true. Not this matrix. I ended up with this, this matrix, this matrix here. Okay? And then I put, put that in RREF and take the null space of it. That's the eigen, that's the eigen, uh, eigenspace. That's the eigenspace.
I just have a quick question. Uh, is, is the vectors in the eigenspace also the eigenvectors?
Yes, yes. Every vector in the eigenspace are the eigenvectors. I asked that to Horowitz, and he gave me like a weird answer that wasn't, I don't know, like he gave me like, I don't know, he didn't. But I think, I'm pretty sure that's true. I can't, yeah, yeah, that's true.
That's true.
That all the eigenvectors are in the span here, are in the span of the eigenspace. Because, right, remember, remember from our, remember from our, uh, thing, it's not just one vector that's an eigenvector, it's a whole span of them. Right? It's a whole span of them, this whole line and that whole line. So in this case, in this visual here, right? We're solving for pretty much that line and that line. It's just in this case, since we're in a higher dimension, it's a line and a plane, uh, line and a plane that gets stretched. But not rotated. That's why it's an eigenvalue.
Uh, could you scroll up just a little bit? Little bit down, little bit down, just to where you find like the the lambda 2.
Lambda 2?
Yeah. Okay, all right, yeah, okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. Okay, well, that's all the content for today. Okay, so we're not doing any more content, but yeah, I'm here to answer some questions if people have some last, last couple of questions. Other than that, been going for a while today, so I got a, got a burrito. My girlfriend got me a burrito, so I'm ready to eat that after.
Wow, this guy has all his subjects and a girlfriend. Must be nice.
That's true. I'm living, I'm living.
Yo, uh, can you scroll though for a second? Honestly, I might just have to look at it later on. I cannot spaced out after a while.
Yeah, yeah, don't worry. So it'll be here. And you can, anyone, anyone can message, well, how many people left the meeting? Yeah. Well, I mean, there was 50 people here before, now there's 20, so about 30.
Oh, okay.
Uh.
Because we definitely went over, overtime.
Yeah, a whole
We still have 15 minutes, though.
No, this was supposed to end at 8. This was supposed to end at 8.
Oh.
Damn, it's like four hours.
Yeah.
Almost.
Guys, I want to, I, I want to have a list 60 on this test.
Yeah, 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 well, you can do it.
Oh, we're all gonna get 100.
What? Okay.
Uh, do you want to call during the test? Like, we can go through it together if you want.
Well, I just, I, I should stop recording, shouldn't I?